Y'all ready? Everybody ready? At this time, I'd like to call the City of Bowie Regular City Council Meeting of Monday, October the 6th, 2025. In council chambers, it is now 8:05 PM. At this time, I would ask everyone who is able to stand and do the pledge of allegiance with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, could you confirm for the record that we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum for this evening's meeting. In council chambers, we have Councilmember Steph, Councilmember Rogers, Mayor Proton Wolfley, Mayor Adams, and Councilmember Brady. And virtually via teams, we have Councilmember Truce Dale and Councilmember Endeumado.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will entertain any motions for any agenda additions, deletions, or amendments. Hearing none, we will now move on to citizen participation. Madam City Clerk? Thank you. Kayla Foster? Did I enunciate your name correctly?
Keela.
Keela? Yes, and adjust it to what's comfortable for you.
Okay. All right, good evening. Bowie Council, we appreciate the opportunity to raise concerns. I'll keep this brief, but the issues are too important to ignore. I represent a group of concerned citizens of Bowie Towers condominiums. Our key concerns with the HOA and the management company. We've had three management companies in the past year, 2025. Their abrupt 51% increase in HOA fees went into effect this August without our vote or resident input. $4,500 special assessment interest imposed without a resident vote despite governing rules that typically require member approval. Failure to provide basic services even with higher fees and assessments. Essential upkeep and maintenance are not being met. Financial transparency issues. Residents only recently learned of significant HOA debt. Yet, the board has not provided clear communication. Management company costs. The board hired a new management company at nearly double the cost of the prior one, even while citing financial distress. Leadership concerns. The former board president abruptly sold her unit and left, raising questions about what financial information may have been withheld. And those financial documents have yet to be given to the new board or the constituents, condo owners. Unlicensed inspections and fines. The board is demanding access to our homes for inspections by an unlicensed individual, creating lists of fines as if we were renters rather than owners. Our ask is that we have full financial transparency, detailed budgets, debt disclosures, and contracts. Clear justification for fee increases and special assessments. Commitment to involve homeowners in all major financial decisions moving forward. Assurance that inspections are conducted lawfully by licensed professionals and with respect for homeowners' rights. And in closing, we understand that HOA is facing challenges, but homeowners deserve transparency, accountability, and a vote in decisions that significantly impact us. We're asking for clear answers and a commitment to include residents before making any future changes. And we do plan on also going before the county council and eventually, once the delegation, state delegation comes back in January, as well eventually having to go to the news if our situations are not taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Terry Rogers. Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce President.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to the mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the Economic Development Committee and fewer, and I'm sorry, and fellow partners in progress. It's a privilege to stand before you tonight as President of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce, representing the many businesses that form the heartbeat of this great city. On behalf of the Board of Directors, our members, and the wider business community, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and to express the continued commitment of the City of Bowie's economic growth, business sustainability, and shared prosperity. The chamber's partnership with the City of Bowie extends back to the mid-1980s. And throughout that time, we stood together through periods of growth, transition, and renewal. Our relationship has always been grounded in a common vision, and that is to make Bowie not just a place where people live, but a place where businesses thrive, where innovation takes root, and where economic vitality fuels community life. Our guiding motto is educate, advocate, and connect. And that continues to shape everything that we do. We educate by offering workshops and professional development led by experts from organizations such as the Small Business Administration and the Bowie Business Innovation Center. We advocate by representing our members' interests before local, county, and state officials, ensuring that policies and decisions help, not hinder, business success. And we connect by fostering collaboration among entrepreneurs, community leaders, and residents through events, networking, and partnerships that strengthen Bowie's business ecosystem. Tonight, the chamber is particularly interested in the Economic Development Committee's report and recommendations regarding efforts to re-envision, revitalize, and redevelop the town center area of our city. This initiative aligns squarely with the chamber's mission and long-term goals. A strong and vibrant town center is not just an urban design concept. It is an economic catalyst. It can become the central hub that reflects Bowie's identity, forward-looking, inclusive, and is business-friendly. We see the town center development as an opportunity to create a true gathering place for commerce, culture, and community. A space that supports small business growth, attracts new investment, and enhances the quality of life for our residents. The chamber stands ready to partner with the city and Economic Development Committee in advancing this vision. Our members bring not only investment and expertise, but also a deep commitment to ensuring the redevelopment efforts serve both economic and community needs. As we look ahead, the chamber remains committed to working collaboratively with city leaders to ensure that Bowie's business community remains viable, visible, and vibrant. Together, we can build on decades of partnership to shape a future where Bowie continues to lead, not only as a great place to live, but as a dynamic place to do business. On behalf of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce, I thank you for your dedication to this city's future and to your commitment to inclusive, sustainable economic growth. We look forward to continuing our work together and making Bowie's next chapter its most exciting yet. Thank you.
Catherine Jones? Uh, Catherine Jones?
It's Catherine.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Okay, good evening. I am here this evening to address an issue that I have been experiencing along with my neighbors who live at Governor's Green Apartments. We have been experiencing a rodent issue. We have addressed this issue with the leasing office. I have actually shown them videos of the rodents who initially started their movement in the, near the trash dumpsters. But for the last six to maybe nine months, they have moved, shown movement around the apartment complex, near the apartments. And in addressing the issue several times, we just haven't seen any correction. We do know that the leasing office or the management company has hired a pest control company. However, we just haven't seen any correction. And so, we're here to address the issue and try to get some resolution to this problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson? And how do you enunciate your first name?
Lenitra.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
That is my neighbor, so we do definitely live on Governor Green Apartments. I am going on four years there. The issue is outside of our homes. And so, just very recently, a neighbor that lives on the fourth floor in our building, I thought I was safe. The animal is coming up on the fourth floor now. So, they do have a pest control company, but neighbors have noticed that they come out and they don't even get out of their cars. They actually are sitting in their car and then they pull off and go wherever they're gonna go or whatever they're doing. I have taken the liberty on my own and printed out nine notices because there's two ways inside of our building on each side. So, I put out the notices and I also put it at the mailbox, advising the residents to not put the trash out in the trash bag. We have a mandatory trash fee that we pay. I oppose to the management today that we don't mind paying an extra fee if we need to, so that maybe we get more days of a pickup and so that this does not happen. But it just seems to have gotten progressively worser. I love where I live at, I love the peace about it, I love the safety for me and my children. I love inside of my home. It's not inside of my home yet. So, that's what I think we're trying to prevent and get some help because it's what we're talking about and going around there. I seem to may have agitated or irritated her in bringing the issue to her. And so, I can tell that it's not getting rectified in any kind of way because it's getting worser. And I don't go on that side at all. The blessing is we have two ways in and out. And you can park back here or you can park by the courtside. So, so far, I've just been parking by the courtside and I haven't had to run about or anything like that by seeing them. But they are, they are very, very bad. It's bad, and we're just not getting anywhere. So, we just came out tonight just hoping that maybe you guys can light a fire somewhere or put something on their minds to better serve us at the property there. I mean, the rents are like a mortgage. And we can enjoy the outside because they're out there the daytime, they're out there the nighttime. They're just taking over. So, just hoping and praying that you guys could help us rectify the situation in some type of shape, fashion, or form. So, I appreciate you, whatever it is you may be able to do. Thank you, you guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Mayor, just, we just found out about this situation. And we're looking into what legal options we have with regard to this property and what we can do in force. And we're gonna be right on it, though.
Thank you, City Manager. That concludes our citizen participation. We will now move on to presentations. At this time, we will do the swearing-in of the new police officers for the City of Bowie. I would like to acknowledge Police Officer Tristan Parks, graduated on December 15th, 2024. He comes to the Bowie Police Department with over eight years of service to our country with the Coast Guard before his honorable discharge in September of 2023. I'd like to acknowledge Police Officer Kyra Owens, who joins us as one of four recent academy graduates who completed their training on September 19th of this year. She joins our department with over six years of a career in security. I'd like to welcome Police Officer Zubia Saleem, also graduated on September 19th. In 2023, he began his career in law enforcement by becoming a cadet with the Prince George's County Police Department. Police Officer Sanjay Young joins us with an associate degree in criminal justice with a bachelor's degree in psychology specializing in criminal justice. After some years spent working in an administrative capacity for the Army Reserves, she also has valuable experience in hospitality for at-risk use. Police Officer Khalid Lee is another of our graduates from September of this year. He holds an associate degree in general studies with a bachelor's in criminal justice administration. Police Officer First Class Quinaya Keev?
Quinaya Keev.
Joins the City of Bowie after years of policing for Prince George's County. Throughout her career, she has performed several roles alongside that of a police officer, including recruitment, detective work, and community engagement. She has come to the Bowie Police Department with numerous awards and training certifications from her two decades in law enforcement. I'd like to also acknowledge our esteemed Police Department with our chief, our deputy chief. And Chief, I'll let you introduce yourselves and everyone. I would like that, Chief Preston, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to present the new members of the Police Department, the four recruits that just graduated, as well as, you know, Officer Parks and Corporal, well, I'm still stuck on Corporal Keev from Prince George's County, but now she joins us as PFC Keev. So, we're so excited to have them. But also with me this evening, I have Deputy Chief Robert Liberati, I have Captain Robert Stevenson, Lieutenant Sean Schwartz, and our newest promoter, Lieutenant Anika Howard. So, it's a wonderful team here that put in a lot of work to continue to add the men and women to the Police Department. We still have a lot of work to do, but, you know, with a wonderful team. You know, I want to also acknowledge, you know, Sergeant Gibson, who's in the back there. He does all of our background investigations. And Andre Jones, who is our public information specialist, who manages our marketing company, has been instrumental in attracting this talent that we have to the Police Department. So, again, more to come. We still have 13 vacancies. So, anybody in the audience that, you know, has a viable candidate, you know, please send them our way. But we're making great progress to make sure that we fill all the vacancies that we have. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'd also like to just take a moment and acknowledge the new Police Chief of Bowie State University, Chief Swain. Would you please just raise your hand so everybody can see who you are? Okay. Now, at this time, we will do the swearing-in of the police officers for the opportunity. We typically would have you down here, but Chief, we'll leave them up there so that we can do it, so that we can all see them clearly. All right, would you please raise your right hand? I state your name. Do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland. And support the Constitution and laws thereof. And that I will to the best of my skill and judgment. Diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office of and regular member of the Police Department. According to the Constitution and laws of this state. Congratulations. We are so very proud of having you join the Bowie Police Department. As you know, is regarded as one of the top police departments, not only in this area, but across the United States. And so, thank you for being willing to serve this community. I'd like another round of applause for you. Chief, how would you like to do the? If they would, come down front and we will join you. I'm gonna try not to roll over here. Is this pretty center for you?
You know, me and regarding a disability leave.
One moment, and I have something for you.
Oh, wait, there's more.
Oh.
One more picture.
Okay. In the back. Another one? Okay, here we go. My back and now. All right, now, hold on one moment. As I call your name, would you please step forward? Officer Tristan Parks? Congratulations. Officer Kyra Owens? Congratulations. Officer Zubia Saleem? How do I enunciate your name correctly?
Zubair.
Zubair?
Zubair, yes.
Zubair?
Zubair.
Well, I gotta get that name right. Our family would not forgive me. Congratulations, thank you, Mayor. Sanjay Young? Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Khalid Lee? Did I not say it correctly?
Yes, sir.
Officer First Class?
Thank you, sir.
Now, on those, each of you, for your own information, you need to sign those. All right? So, put your John Hancock and that'll be the final, final official act. All righty?
Yes, sir.
And again, on behalf of the entire City of Bowie, on behalf of the very proud City Council, staff, citizens, and those even in the surrounding areas, we want to say thank you for stepping up at a time when many aren't. And we appreciate your dedication. And you're willing to be a part of this great city. So, God bless you and thank you again. So God bless you and thank you again. Hold them back, too, and give another picture.
Hold them back, please.
Like they have it, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you for having me.
Now, if you would, please just hold it up a little higher. And we're gonna take one more picture, but each of you just playing it. Just hold it back like they have it so that it shows.
You need us to?
And raise it up, huh? Yeah, yeah.
Let me go down this side.
And I'm gonna get in where I'm not blocking. Okay? So you hold it up. One last one. Here we go.
Squishing.
Still looking for my kids.
Is that mic going away? All right, again, thank you. Chief, I would also like to commend you and your staff on the recruitment of such high quality officers.
That's right.
Thank you so much for everything you're doing, tennis and your entire staff.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Again, thank you. Thank you again. We will now move on to City Boards and Committees. We have appointments and reappointments and swearing-in. Mr. Lionel Charles was interviewed on September 15th, 2025, for appointment to the Information Technology Committee. Council concur to appoint him to the committee as a regular member for a two-year term. I would ask Councilmember Endu Madhu to move to appoint him. On behalf of Councilman
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Lionel Charles.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, the motion carries. Ms. Althea Smalls was interviewed on September 15th, 2025, for appointment to the Education Committee. Council concurred to appoint her to the committee as a regular member for a two-year term. Councilmember Endu Madhu, would you make the motion to appoint her?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an appointment to appoint Ms. Althea Charles to the Education Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, the motion carries. Would Ms. Althea Smalls and Mr. Lionel Charles, present, please come forward. And you can lift the mic up. On right there, yeah. Towards the two of you. And would you both please raise your right hands? And repeat after me your constitutional oath of office. I state your name.
I, Lionel Charles.
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I will
And that I will.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance
Be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of and state the offices that you're being sworn in from.
Execute the office of Education Committee. IT Committee.
Okay. As a regular member of the
As a regular member of the IT Committee.
And according to the Constitution
And according to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you please step forward? Here we go. Again, congratulations with Smalls.
Thank you.
There you go. And this is for you. And thank you, Mr. Charles. And here you go. All right, would you like to?
Thank you very much.
I'll come forward. I'm gonna put you to work.
That's right.
Thank you.
For another 20 years of service.
I would like to again thank both of you for your commitment to serve this community. Okay. Dennis?
You got space? There we go. All right, now we're good.
Gotcha.
Okay. Again, thank you for your service to the community. At this time, I will begin council announcements. My first comment would be to thank everyone who's involved in the Bowie, Old Bowie Festival on Saturday. I'd like to thank again everyone from our staff and particularly those who were boots on the ground, so to speak, and that encounter from our Police Department, to our staff and to everyone here. And I'd like for those who participated and helped to make that happen, please just raise a hand so people can see who you are. Yeah. And again, the staff and everyone, and I'd like to thank the council too for supporting the Old Bowie Festival.
And the committee and volunteers.
And the committee and volunteers, all of those who supported. Again, without all of you, it would not have been such a success that it was. And I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege and congratulate the young lady who sang the National Anthem. Because she did a phenomenal job.
She certainly did.
Having said that, I will open the floor to other council members. Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make mention that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And this began back in 1985, and it was established to promote education about breast cancer and encourage regular screenings and support research efforts. Breast cancer is a beast, and it impacts just about everybody's family now. So I wanted to mention that. I also wanted to mention that October is nationally known as National Women's Small Business Month. And it's a time to recognize the contributions of women entrepreneurs, raise awareness of challenges they face, like access to capital, mentorship, networks, regulatory burdens, and promote support and promote support and policies that help women-owned businesses grow. And we know we have our Maryland Women's Business
That's correct.
Program over at Bowie Town Center and a lot of women-owned businesses throughout the city of Bowie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rogers. Any other? I don't see any hands raised on the screen. Councilwoman, a staff.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to second the mayor's thanks for everyone who is involved in making the Old Bowie Festival success yet again. This was brought back several years ago by local residents, and city staff agreed as a temporary solution to help support the event. And of course, as they say, there is no solution more permanent in government than a temporary one. And over time, your team worked hand-in-hand with the local residents and the volunteers who helped put this on. But really, your team has provided the backbone of the people power on the day of the event and their willingness and enthusiasm to support this on a Saturday. And in past years, we've had some rough ones, some rainy ones. It really means a lot to us. The timing is really excellent with the progress that we're making with Incubate in Old Bowie. And so this is one of many efforts that we're undertaking as part of the Old Bowie revitalization. And I continue to be deeply appreciative to all staff who have been supporting that effort. Thank you.
Any other announcements from council members? Hearing none, we will now move on to the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council. You're right, the Old Bowie Festival was a booming success about it seemed to me that the best we could not let this not be a great event. So I think we had about 25 people all total supporting this operation all over, from public works to police, to rangers, golf courts. And we consider it a city event as much as anything else.
Thank you, City Manager. We will now move on to Consent Agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, the motion carries. At this time, we will move on to Old Business. And Item A is the Adoption of Ordinance 01025, Amending Chapter 17, Park Rules and Regulations, Section 17-5, Enforcement Violations and Penalties, to provide that it is a misdemeanor to camp in city parks or to remain in city parks after closing in violation of Section 17-2, Park Rules, and amending Chapter 22, Streets and Sidewalks, Article 1, and General Section 22-11, Buildings or Obstructions in Streets, Sidewalks, or Alley's unlawful. To clarify that the erection of tents and other shelters in the public right-of-way is prohibited, and amending Section 22-19A, enforcement violations and penalties to declare that the erection and maintenance of tents or other shelters on public property to be a misdemeanor and to prescribe a penalty for said offense. At this time, we will open a public hearing.
Mayor, we do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item tonight, and no comments were received.
At this time, I will declare the public hearing closed. I will turn this now to council for action. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adoption of Ordinance 01025.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Discussion. Any council members? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, the motion carries. We will now move on to Item B, which is the Adoption of Ordinance 01125, Amending the Adopted Budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, as adopted by Ordinance 0425, to appropriate funds for the following projects: $26,000 for opioid remediation strategies and $45,900 to replace a public safety vehicle. I will now declare a public hearing open.
Mayor, no one signed up for this item either this evening, and no comments were received.
Thank you. At this time, I will declare the public hearing closed. This is eligible for action, so I will entertain a motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adoption of Ordinance 01125.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, a quick question for staff. Quick question for staff on the on the vehicle. What's the timing look like for recovery through insurance?
Good evening, Councilman Byron Matthews, Finance Director. That's being handled with the Risk Management employees for the city of Bowie. They handle all the relationships between insurance recovery. I am not aware of that, but I'll find out that date for you and then provide it to you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Right. Councilman, does that have anything that you would like to swing? We can continue with Okay. At this time, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. We will now move on to New Business. Item A, the Health of Beech Trees on Bel Air Drive. Staff from the Community Services Department will report on the health status of beech trees along Bel Air Drive, including observations of beech leaf disease and brittle cinder fungus and associated risks to tree stability. City set.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Nick Spurgeon with the Department of Community Services. We have Mr. Paul Shuts, our Community Forester, and Brian Ershleben, the Superintendent for Parks and Grounds.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, council members.
And you can speak directly into the microphone.
My name is Paul Shuts. I'm the Community Forester with the city. I have here with me Brian Ershleben, who is the Superintendent of Parks and Ground. And we have experts from Bartlett Tree with us, Aaron Tzslowski, John Smith Meyer, and Kevin Chase. They all have long lists of credentials that you can read. Thanks for being here today, guys. Next slide, please. Okay, so we have over 50 American beech trees that line
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt. Could you put the mic a little closer to you so that
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Over 50 American beech trees line Bel Air Drive from Spangler Lane to Sunway along the Bel Air Stables. These trees provide shade, character, and significant beautification to the neighborhood. Next slide. There are two diseases impacting the American beech tree. They have brittle cinder fungus, which is a root and trunk rot fungus. It can cause sudden tree failure It can cause sudden tree failure, meaning either large limbs or the whole tree could fall over from it. And it cannot be treated. Another tree, which they don't have, but it's affecting trees in the surrounding areas and it could be here soon, is beech leaf disease. It's a foliar nematode which causes leaf banding, premature drop, long-term decline, and there is treatment available. Here's an example of some diseased trees. The fungus typically starts at the base, works its way up the trunk, and then you can see that these two have already lost major branches. Impact on the community. Public safety risks from sudden failure of weakened trees, loss of neighborhood character and canopy coverage, risk of spread to other species, financial costs for treatment, removal, and replacement. Our main concern, of course, is public safety and safety of the citizens. So we have a plan to remove 15 of these trees. 11 of those have brittle cinder fungus. That's the one that can cause sudden failure. And then there's another four that are structurally unstable and we also think are at risk of failure. And we would like to do this in a phased approach, starting with Phase 1, which is to remove one tree near the stables. We've identified that one as the riskiest tree because it poses a hazard to our stable museum building. And then Phase 2, we'd like to remove the other 14 diseased and structurally unstable trees. Here's a removal plan map. So you can see Bel Air Drive there. And then each one of those little red dots is a beech tree. The ones with the X's are the ones that have either brittle cinder fungus or structural issues. And if you ever walk by the beech trees, take a look at them. They all have a metal tag on them with a number. So they're all inventoried. That's what the numbers are that you see here. So like I mentioned before, there's 11 of them with brittle cinder fungus. And there's a list of the numbers. And four of them have structural issues. Not all of these trees are along Bel Air Drive. There's three of them at the stables that we would also like to remove for the same issues. This is our replacement plan. We evaluated several replacement tree options to preserve the street's character and maintain a consistent look utilizing the following criteria: disease resistance, wind and storm resistance. We want to keep that same boulevard canopy style. We'd like to use native species with high ecological value, low surface roots, and wide crown spread. So the top selections we identified, we did a little bit of research and we identified white oak, black gum, northern red oak, shag bark hickory, American hornbeam, and red maple. Upon consultation with Bartlett, the following species are recommended for replacement consideration. We intend to select two to three species. And the ones we have now are white oak, which is a top choice for structural soundness, wind resistance, and ecological value. Ideal for large spaces, but needs patience due to slow growth. Black gum matches white oak for adaptability and aesthetics. Is best for urban settings or wet sites due to minimal surface roots, slightly less wind resistant. And shag bark hickory, which is strong, ecologically valuable, and low maintenance. Best for rural or naturalized areas due to size and nut litter. And then here's an example of three of the trees. Next slide. And then here, you can see examples of the bark, the leaves, the fruit, the flowers, the buds. And I'll point out that black gum is not the sweet gum tree that drops those little gumballs, just to clarify. Treatment and budget. So the beech leaf disease treatment, that's the one that we're anticipating that we need to prevent against, is gonna be scheduled for July to August 2026 with an estimated cost of $39,000. Removal and replacement cost in Phase 1 and 2 that we talked about is gonna have an estimated cost of $43,000. That concludes our presentation. Thank you to everyone, and we'll open the floor for questions.
On that last slide, what was the trial number for the replacement?
Okay, so we're thinking $5,000 for replacement and maintenance. That's for 15 trees being planted, maintained.
So that's the 4,500 and the 500, make that 5,000.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that for everyone listening. Okay, I will open it up to council for any questions. Councilman Esteb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just for clarity's sake, the trees that are currently there are what species?
The trees that are currently there are American beech.
So we got American beech?
Yes.
We have three possibilities. From what you indicated, white oak looked to me like the most similar-looking tree that we might replace it with. Trade-off is slow growth, right?
Right.
Okay. How long from the time of planting until like they would be roughly comparable in size to most of the current beech trees? We talking like a 40-year time window there?
I think it's quite a long time. But Bartlett, do one of you guys want to chime in?
I would say somewhere between 40 and 60 years before they reach the current size and shape of trees.
So I might still be alive, is what I hear you saying. Cool. Great. I'm making enemies left and right tonight. Cool. Okay. Thank you. So do you need us to choose a tree tonight?
Not necessarily.
That might be a Mr. Spurgeon question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilman, no, we would not be requesting council to choose a tree specimen. Actually, we would be, the strategy would be to diversify the number of trees. So it wouldn't just be one species. As we mentioned before, we'd be looking at two or three species. And I'll let Bartlett's comment on why that is important.
Well, let me take it back. So you don't need a decision from us. We will be diversifying the tree species. This is to help maintain their resistance to disease.
So what we've had here in Bowie and in Maryland, we've had the ash tree issue that we're all aware of with ash borer and how it can decimate a population. We're similarly having an issue now with beech trees, not just here, but with the beech leaf disease, as was discussed. And that is a long-term, you know, if we wanted to keep beech trees forever, you know? It's gonna be a long-term strategy of having to inject chemicals into these trees to preserve them to the tune of, you know, $40,000, $50,000 every two years to preserve just Bel Air Drive, you know, just that section. So that's what we're contending with here.
Right. Understood. My only ask, I'm completely fine with the plan. Makes sense to me. I'm a huge tree lover. But, you know, I get the big picture here. My big ask would be to work with the city manager and with Una Cooper in particular to make sure that we are doing really extensive comms on this, you know, via the text, the newsletter, and so on, explaining to residents, I'm sorry? I'm sorry, with our new communications director, Sonia. Apologize. On making sure we're really extensively communicating this, not just now, but as well as we approach when we'll be doing the work on this. So residents understand exactly the problem, why we're doing this, what we're doing, why this is the best solution. And I would encourage you to find a channel for residents to direct their thoughts on this in particular. That can be us if you want. But I think just talking early and often with people about this will be helpful because I think we know our residents pretty well and we know that this will be something that they have feelings about. And early education, I think, will go a long way in helping with that.
Mr. Esteb, thank you for that. We, when I was informed of the condition, I asked Nick to develop this briefing because I wanted to make sure everybody understood what the circumstances are there. That, and so before we remove any trees, we're gonna saturate with all our media, social media, and everything else afterwards. Also, I'm gonna ask them to post some signage in areas before they actually do the cutting so people can see that. Sort of like what we do with paving roads.
And I appreciate that instinct and thank you for it. I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Councilman, Mayor Procham, before voting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Esteb, first of all, thank you all for being here this evening and thank you from Bartlett for being here as well. One of the aspects that's kind of remained kind of unsaid and we haven't really spoken about is the big elephant in the room, which is the historic nature of these trees. These have a genesis going back centuries and are associated with the mansion. They are part of what was and still continues to be a formal allay of trees leading up to the property, one for carriages and the like. And I'm concerned about changing the character of the plantings when we have this historical aspect associated with it. I know that there is some concern about forthcoming or the slowly or the migration of the disease coming in from, I think, Ohio and Illinois and that area, moving eastward and presenting a potential risk. And I also recognize that dense collections of the same trees can lend themselves to a wipeout situation all at once. That having been said, the whole beauty of that alleyway, that road, is the fact that it is all one type of tree. It's all one shape. What I didn't see from the presentation for comparison purposes was the form for the beech trees that are there, which are different in form than the other trees. I mean, the white oak, for example, has a drooping characteristic. It's very pyramidal and so forth. While the birch trees definitely have more of a spread and they have, you know, higher up, you know, before you get the main branches and foliage. And they do have, of course, a big crown at the top. But I'm concerned that that is gonna present a significant departure from the original intent of the, of that alley and that beauty that is associated with a single species. And that, of course, presents some risk, which is you lose one or you lose all of them. But at the same time, if you move forward with changing some of the tree species and intermingling, you no longer have that beautiful effect of a single species, that formal, that formal look and that similarity of all the trees changing colors at the same time. And they're all having that same view. Can you speak a little bit about some of the options? For example, if we were to continue with replacing with additional birch, recognizing that we do have some risks associated with eventually the disease coming in? What about the fungus? Is the fungus so bad that if we plant anything that it will, that it will infect the existing, excuse me, from the existing, in the areas of the existing trees? Will that fungus continue to live and infect the new trees?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Dr. Kevin Chase. I'm a researcher with Bartlett Tree Experts. Regarding the two things that we talked about, so brittle cinder fungus. So that is a disease that mostly attacks older trees. And that's going to enter any tree that has a wound on it. So whether that's a car accident happening, a lawnmower going over the roots, or a weed whacker going across, that is how the spores enter that. So as far as new tree plantings, so long as it's not mechanically damaged, there's no concern about that fungus getting in. The major concern is beech leaf disease. It is currently in central and south-central Pennsylvania. So it is moving rapidly. The main way that it migrates is actually through the bird migration. So at Cornell University, they detected these nematodes, which are microscopic roundworms on the wings of the birds. So as they are moving through the areas, that's how they're dispersing so rapidly. So all of New England, we are watching before our eyes the beech forest to disappear, just like we did with M.R. Ash Borer or American Elms or chestnuts before that. So it is absolutely heartbreaking, both from a forest standpoint and from a community forestry standpoint, that we are watching these trees disappear. Councilman, I fully understand your reasoning and your rights to question this. But as far as the young beech trees, they are severely affected by the nematodes. We would be talking about doing four chemical applications a year for every single young beech tree planted because we can't inject those. But then for the older trees, continuing to inject those. So if you were going to plant these trees, we are creating a chemically dependent situation where that's gonna be the reality for these trees. We can keep them alive, but it's kind of, you know, going into a hospice situation as soon as you put the trees in the ground.
So, so the progress on kind of a more manageable treatment plan is just not there yet?
It's not, no. Our research labs, since the day this nematode arrived, has been the leaders, along with the U.S. Forest Service and D.B. Tree Experts in Ohio, managing this disease. And that's the best solution that we have. And it's taken us seven years to find that solution. But there's no resistance that we've observed or no native tolerance within the trees. And there's nothing in the nursery that we can find that's, you know, quite the same as the American beech.
So is there, are there any other? I mean, I have, I've seen the recommendations here and you presented this evening. Are there any other varieties of beech that are similar in form that might be less susceptible?
So there are European beeches and Japanese beeches. The Japanese beech is the very likely pathway of how it got here. This nematode is from Japan. So through the nursery trade, that's how most invasive species are globally moved. So there are similar forms. Some of the European beeches, they seem to have a little bit more tolerance, but they are absolutely still affected. We just see a slower decline across those. So as far as the genus, Ficus, and the Ficus family is what the beech trees are in, we don't see that resistance or tolerance.
All right, council member. Wanda, council member, maybe I'll go to another council member and then come back to you, okay? Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I drive down that street and it is absolutely beautiful. See the white and the foliage and everything. So I understand the concern about, you know, trying to keep it light. But I also understand nature does what nature does and you can only control but so much. I think that I'll go back to Councilman Esteb's remarks, which is around making sure that the community is aware of what's going on because it's nothing worse than seeing that rotting tree and driving down that street. And I think they would have a better appreciation for what's going on if we're communicating it loud and often because it does look beautiful and it is historic. But, you know, just hate to see that happen. And we don't want to see trees tumbling over while people are driving down the street. But we do want it to be aesthetically kind of aligned. So thank you. I appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then other council members, any questions? No, I'm going, give everybody an opportunity first and I'll circle back. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I can understand the concern. You know, I don't want to see those trees go. And if it was a matter of a property owner deciding they wanted to take down these historic trees and they just made the decision to do it, I could see where people could be upset and try and stop it. But clearly, we're up against Mother Nature. And Mother Nature tends to prevail. The real concern that I have is, and my understanding is, one of the problems with replacing with it is the fact that the disease is not only bark above ground, but it's also in the ground. Is that correct? So that whatever we put in would be susceptible to the same thing to start off with, which is what you basically have said. So I can understand. I'm frustrated. I don't want to see that species go. But Mother Nature has other plans for us. My bigger question is, all right, we have a problem and we've identified it. What's the prognosis for those trees that we don't take down? Are we talking another five years? We have to go in and take another 10 down because of similar problems? Is it gonna propagate through or any thoughts on that?
So for the brittle cinder fungus, you're gonna be reducing the likelihood of further infection because the? infection because there's an asexual stage and a sexual stage. So during the sexual stage, it releases spores that move around through the air and any open wound that's present, that is where the spores will land and then manifest within that area. So the important thing there, there is a product that you can use called, it's a potassium phosphate, it's a type of fertilizer, but it really strengthens the cell walls. So there is, it's not a curative, but it is a way to make the tree stronger and more resistant to getting that pathogen. So that would be a recommendation. The way this fungus moves within the tree is it actually has these hyphae, so it moves cell wall to cell wall. So the potassium phosphate strengthens those cell walls, reduces the likelihood of that hyphae moving through those cell walls. So that'd be my, my recommendation there. As far as, you know, I, I can't guarantee or put a timeline on, you know, how many trees are going to be infected. It's simply just doing a, a survey, which I think you have a great team that's doing that, of determining, you know, what, what, what areas of the tree are potentially susceptible to that. As far as beech leaf disease, there is, there's no stopping or preventing the spread of that simply because that's, that's done through the bird migration and we're, we're not trying to stop birds from migrating. So, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Last comment I have, I share my colleagues' concern that the one thing we need to do is make sure the public is aware of the full aspect of this issue, the solutions that we looked into, the ones we've ended up not being able to, like, replacing with like kind, in order to make sure that there's an understanding on the public's part because it, it is a, it's part of what makes Bowie special. It's one of many things that make Bowie special. And if our residents start driving down there and see the trees coming down without an understanding, they're gonna be awfully upset and disillusioned, if you will. So I, I think it's incumbent upon us, council and staff, to get the word out, use every avenue available to do that in order to move forward on this because it's an unfortunate thing. We've seen it with other things, the, uh, the elm trees and what have you. It's, it's unfortunate that it, Mother Nature is kind of forcing this on us. It's not something that, it's a developer or it's a property owner, something we can control, it's outside of our control. So we need to make sure the public is well informed of this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. City Manager, I think you and staff understand that we want to make sure that we do a communication and I think the Councilman raises a very good point, just to make sure that we do, do some public information and other things, kind of above and beyond what we would normally do, to make sure people understand what's going on there and let them know ahead of time and understand why we're doing it, so.
Well, we, we intend to saturate our media, uh, medium and our avenues long before we actually get out there and start taking trees down.
Hey, thank you, City.
And we, and we're gonna use some signage in and around the trees to let people know what's.
Alright. Thank you, City Manager. I, I, I have a couple of questions as we look at that and it kind of piggyback some of the questions that you've already heard. And that as, as we move forward, we will be looking at, I guess, replacing those trees as they become, hopefully not, but along there with other trees. I think Councilman DeFour made a good point and I'd like to reemphasize that as we look at this, we may need to really specifically pick one tree that we kind of utilize so that we can create a canopy that over time, potentially, assuming Mother Nature takes our course and we lose all of them, that we have, replacing it with a tree that provides a canopy that looks alike, that still has that feel of, of one tree going down and, and has that aesthetic appeal to everyone. So I would like for us to consider that. Narrowing it to one, I know we want to kind of, my understanding, plant some, see how they do, but I really would like for us to choose the tree that we'd like to see, understanding the problems that we have now, lining that, that corridor going onto the museum. And my second question, that was my comment, but my question is, are there any other beech firs around the city, other than along there and by the museum, that we need to be looking at as well?
Yes, so, there are other beech trees. People that live near the stables have some historic beech trees in their yard as well, so that could impact citizens' trees. Do you know of any others, Brian?
Uh, yes, we have some European beech trees in our inventory at Buckingham Park, so.
And are they at risk?
Of a slighter chance, yeah. Yeah.
They are absolutely at risk and they, they will perish due to beech leaf disease. It just takes a little bit longer. They seem to, you know, hold on a few more years than the American beech trees.
Okay. My, my question would be into Steph, that we make sure that we notify these people ahead of time of the risks that they face with their trees and give them the, the heads up so if they choose to make a change, but also that they understand the risk, the safety risk, uh, associated with this and that we get ahead of that and letting them know. And to the best of our ability, check in with them every now and then to see how their trees are doing. Okay? Hey, thank you so much. I will go back to Councilman DeFour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me pick up where I was left off. The replacements, how large a caliper replacement is, are available for these, for these various species to avoid some of the, you know, delay in, in getting a fully mature tree?
You're not gonna like my answer from a research standpoint.
How much money do you have, right?
The, the full recommendation from a scientific standpoint is actually to plant as small of a caliper tree as possible, as far as the likelihood of survival. With larger trees and dealing with larger root balls, the chances of mortality and then further replacement, it actually goes up quite a lot. So I, I know that's not what the council wants to hear. You want a larger tree as fast as possible, but as far as everything that we've observed and work specifically out of the more in our beriden in Chicago, they've been doing this for decades and that is, there would be the recommendation. You can get larger trees, especially white oaks. You can get, easily get a 15-foot tree, but the likelihood of success and having to replace that is much higher.
Okay, thank you. The other aspect, and we talked a little bit about, um, in the community involvement and notifying people, but I do think there's an opportunity here to actually make people part of the solution and let folks choose a, a replacement, just an opportunity to get people engaged and make people more aware of what's, of what the choices are. They become a bit more educated and everybody will know that the reason we're doing this is because of, of the disease and, you know, I prefer the oaks or whatever it might be to, to replace. Then the other aspect is, has anybody reached out to the green team or anybody at, at the museum for any research, for example, on museum side, what might be a most historically appropriate alternative for some of these replacements? So there might be something that was done similarly in that time period that might be able to be replicated.
So no, we did not reach out to the green team. This is a fairly new development on our side. The tree species that were selected were done so, again, as the show indicates, looking at native species, looking at species that have similar type streetscape value, high value, and those that have high environmental, natural resource value. So th, those were the elements that were, were considered.
Alright, thank you. Well, if we could reach, if we could reach out to the historic folks just to see if there was another common thread there. And I, like the Mayor, definitely think a, a single species replacement for it, notwithstanding the fact that there is some additional risk associated with introducing just a single, does maintain some sense of the formality of that row and there would be a kind of a progression that would evolve over time. And hopefully, we could get something that at least alludes back to the history that was the American beech alleyway that leads up to the mansion. Thank you all for your time this evening, very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brady? Thank you, Mayor. And my apologies for not asking this when I had the mic before. In the process of removing the trees, are there potentials for spreading the disease through the spores and what have you to the healthy trees? How will the wood be taken down and handled? Is there an issue with that or not? You're, you seem to kind of have a, I don't believe it's, no, just kidding.
No.
No.
It can be risk, but there are certain times of the year, winter is a really good time to do that, as far as when they're not sporulating. So with, with the timeline that's been proposed, it's a really great time to reduce the likelihood of infection. So from a science, scientific standpoint, I think they're spot on as far as the timing with the planning of.
Okay. So it's not a year-round problem, it's just certain parts and during those times, it's a potential problem, work won't be done?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
And I just, I wanted to add.
Go ahead, please.
We're also gonna be removing the stumps completely and removing all the chips from the area, which will prevent the likelihood of spread for the fungus.
Alright, I'd like to say thank you for coming in this evening and sharing that information with the council staff and with all of those watching right now. Again, we appreciate what you're doing, we appreciate your efforts and thank you for being here this evening, more importantly. And again, we appreciate your report and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the Economic Development Committee EDC report for information purposes, for the revision, revitalize and redevelopment, the town center area of the Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Billy Lewis and currently, I'm the Chair of the Bowie Economic Development Committee for this year and hopefully for next year. It's good to see you all again, even those on virtually. First, I would like to thank you for your bold leadership in taking, in tasking this, I've gotta put my reading glasses on. Let me start over. Thanks, I would like to thank you for your bold leadership in tasking this committee to draft a vision for reimagining the Bowie Town Center. Your directives demonstrate foresight and courage in taking on this task and we are proud to share our work, all the work that we've done together. The committee established a working group that includes industry expert to devise a transformative concept, setting the stage for measurable benefits to residents, businesses and the broader region. This was a collaborative effort, hence this will be a panel presentation. You will hear from the following members of our working group. Vice Chair Yolanda Muckel, who will cover the real estate market. Michael Olero will cover the business opportunities. David Cunningham will cover the vendors' design and Kevin Kennedy will cover the development process and guidelines. So how did we build this concept? One, we started with ideas, kind of like brainstorming. We began by identifying a comprehensive set of ideas and features essential to revitalization, revitalization, such as major anchor stores, access to public transportation, parking, vibrant public spaces, safety, walkability and housing options for thriving mixed-use community. Two, we looked outward. We then identified multiple town centers in the region and we did a one-day windshield tour, a drive-by look to understand patterns, strength and opportunities that could inform our approach by seeing, we actually saw what worked and what didn't work at those town centers. Three, captured features. From our windshield tour, we captured features that contributed to our, to a vibrant town center, including transportation access. You know, they were by metro and march train, et cetera. There were mixed use residential, mostly on top of businesses, with landmark anchor stores, restaurants, entertainment, green areas, public spaces, plus civic and municipal building facilities. We saw all of that. Four, narrowed the focus. Next, we narrowed down our search to three town centers and, and conducted pedestrian walkthroughs. This gave us a real sense of what works on the ground, particularly with respect to the selection of what we considered necessary and the aspect we considered important. The same old, traffic flow, access to parking, building height, sidewalk width, retail entrances, landscaping and community amenities. Number five, partnered with design expert. Once we agreed on these findings, we engaged a design vendor who translated them into a cohesive, cohesive conceptual vision that we are presenting to you tonight. Now, we'll pass the microphone to our distinguished panel, starting with Vice Chair Yolanda Muckel. After her, you will hear from Mr. Michael Olero, followed by Mr. David Cunningham, then Mr. Kevin Kennedy. After their presentation, I will return with the closing remarks. Thank you.
Chair Lewis, good evening, Mayor Adams and council members. I'm Yolanda Muckel. Of course, I love real estate. I've been with Long &amp; Foster for 22 years. I was the president of Maryland Realtors, so if we could see the next slide. Population growth creates demand. When new homes are built, more people move into an area. This growing, growing population creates immediate demand for everyday goods and services. Grocery stores, restaurants, retail shops, gas stations and healthcare providers. Developers of commercial real estate often follow residential growth to capture the new customer base. Next slide, please. Workforce supply for businesses. A larger retail base, residential base provides a workforce for local businesses. Employers, whether small shops, corporate offices or industrial facilities, are more likely to locate in areas where employees can find housing nearby as a, at a range of price points. This connection supports balanced economic development. Next slide, please. Infrastructure and accessibility. Residential development usually brings infrastructure improvements, roads, utilities, schools, public transit. Those upgrades make the area more attractive to commercial investors who depend on accessibility and reliable services. A new subdivision, for example, might prompt the county to widen the roads, which then supports larger retail centers. Next slide. Property value and tax base. As residential communities grow, property values increase and local governments collect more in property taxes. Higher tax revenue often funds community amenities and infrastructure, which in turn attracts commercial developers. For example, a growing suburban area may suddenly be able to support a shopping center or office park because of the local economy is stronger. Next slide, please. Lifestyle and mixed-use development. Modern buyers often prefer communities with nearby conveniences. This trend has fueled mixed-use developments, where residential and commercial projects are integrated, apartments above shops, walkable town centers. Residential growth makes these projects viable because there's an immediate built-in customer, customer base. Personally, as a Realtor, I've had, this past year, clients specifically state they wanted to move to Prince George's County, they were looking in Bowie and they wanted to be where there's residential as well as shops. One development, my client purchased in Melford, she specifically came from Boston and that's where she wanted to go. Another client relocated from Odenton, they went to South Lake. So real-life examples of people who specifically wanted to be where they could go to the grocery store and not have to drive, for example. Next slide, please. Timing and market cycles. Commercial development typically. Commercial development typically lags behind residential growth. First come the rooftops, then the retail and office space to serve them. If commercial projects come too early without enough residents, businesses struggle. If they come too late, the community may lack amenities pushing residents elsewhere. So next up, we're going to have Michael Olaro.
Thank you, Mrs. Muckel, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So I'll be talking about the business and economic opportunity ahead of us as well as the social benefits that we could realize by the revitalization or redevelopment of the Bowie Town Center. Excite. So start with just providing some context and the need for urgency. So Bowie Town Center is past its prime, not just because it is for sale by the Washington Prime Group, but it's what was once a vibrant shopping center is, some could say in decline, but we like to say it's at a pivotal point that requires action to stimulate its resurgence. Consequences of inaction, we can look around the country, around the region of what's happened to shopping centers that were not invested in, but we can look right at the Bowie Town Center, the former Sears parcel, which was proposed for a mixed use redevelopment that did not materialize, which is an example of the cost of inaction, ambiguity or so moving processes. Good thing is that we've got the building blocks for, or the foundation for the redevelopment of Bowie Town Center. We've got the Mitchellville and Vicinity Master Plan that sets a foundation for mixed use development with economic revitalization. But that master plan is not enough. There needs to be intentional and bold action taken by the city to signal to the market that the city, Bowie is open for business. Next slide. So Ms. Muckel talked about some of the growth potential, what could happen by revitalizing the city, the Bowie Town Center. First, you've got business attraction and job creation. Redevelopment will attract national brands. A lot of the same amenities that residents have been demanding for years, redevelopment of Bowie Town Center would provide for that, increasing foot traffic and consumer spending at the town center. Mixed use developments also create construction and permanent jobs, so that will boost the local employment. Ms. Muckel talked about increased tax revenue, not just from property values increasing and property taxes. You also have sales taxes, business taxes, which will improve the overall fiscal health of the city and the county. Enhanced retail performance. Prince George's County Retail Revitalization Guide shows that modernized centers perform the older ones in leasing and tenant quality and there are examples across the region that we could look at. One we found was Avalon in Alpharetta, Georgia, which was a 98 coming mixed use redevelopment that attracts not just folks from the local area, but from across the country visiting that shopping center. So there's opportunity to capitalize on demand for better quality amenities, not just in the city, but also folks from the county and other counties coming to Bowie to take advantage of what's possible at the Bowie Town Center. Next slide. So there are social and community benefits. You've got improved quality of life, mixed redevelopment can create walkable communities, public gathering spaces, access to amenities and enhanced visibility. Depending on the type of development, it could incorporate workforce housing, green spaces, multimodal transit options. We obviously don't have a metro station here, but you've got biking, walking, pedestrian friendly types of development. It'll also create community engagement and increase public safety. Revitalized center can create a sense of community pride, community, not that there's no pride in the town center, but every developed town center gives folks to something to be proud about, proud about. Throughout the process, and we'll talk about what the community's, the city's role would be, but it's important to have community input early on in the process and as we go through the process of revitalization. And Security Square Mall in Baltimore County is one example of that had public charades to get community input as they went through the redevelopment process. So we'll talk about what the city's role would be. I believe it's the next slide. And so what can the city do? First is provide policy and zoning support. So the city can leverage its influence by supporting zoning changes if needed, site plan approvals and advocating for streamlined processes. Incentives and partnerships, not sure what those could be yet, but certainly partnering with county and state agencies to, and private entities to figure out public private partnerships that could support some of the infrastructure improvements that Ms. Muckel mentioned earlier. We've got agencies like the Prince George's County Redevelopment Authority, the Economic Development Corporation that we could be, that can be leveraged to attract developers and investors into the city. And the city can also help with community engagement. Whether it's public forums, surveys, charades, to get community input on the values and what they need in, in the city. And finally, just encouraging the inclusion of local businesses in leasing and contracting opportunities. Redevelopment will attract new businesses to the, to the city, but certainly the homegrown businesses, the businesses that are here today, we want to make sure they're not left behind and that they can benefit from what the revitalization does. That, I'm going to pass it to Mr. Cunningham to go over the design, the vision.
Well, good evening. I can only imagine what you guys were thinking as you looked at your packets over the weekend and said, what are they planning? First of all, it is not a plan. It is a visual concept paper. It is for you to review and consider and for you to lead the community as to how do we begin a discussion about what we want for the future of the Bowie Town Center? As well as to reach out to our partners, the anchor tenants in the Bowie Town Center, as well as the business, the property holders. Certainly, as we know, the Bowie Town Center itself is in the process of being sold. In addition, we know the theater across this way is also being sold and repackaged as a new property. So we don't know what those developers, those interest groups may also want to see, but it's an opportunity for us for the first time perhaps, to think through what we as residents in the community would like to see and then have the opportunity to network and partner with those property owners, those anchor tenants, on in fact collaborating on a final plan of revision for the Bowie Town Center. We all know those shopkeepers, those anchor tenants, those property owners all want to have a successful business opportunity. This is a groundwork in fact laid, in fact, begin that process. With that, we can start the slideshow. Hold your horses. Okay. Let's go back to the first slide. Thank you. Okay. We looked at not just the Bowie Town Center proper, but also Bowie Crossing. Bowie Crossing is a partner opportunity for in fact Bowie Town Center development. If we can find a way to bring those two properties together so that those who are either residing in one property or other or doing business or taking advantage of the opportunities at the other parcel, but also cross over and share that opportunity for business and services. Next slide. This is to look at the opportunity here based upon the acreage of the Bowie Town Center. One thing we were all surprised by, but as we realized soon thereafter, is that all the town centers around the area that we visited are significantly smaller in size than Bowie, the Bowie Town Center. So we have approximately 120 acres we can possibly use for development. We don't have to use all that acreage. What we're going to share with you tonight is a long range concept paper, of which part of it could be developed, as we in fact talked to the various property owners and the new purchasers of the property. They may have their own plans, so they may in fact want to participate in a smaller development rather than a large scale development. But again, this is beginning of a process. Next slide. This is the Bowie Town Center as it exists right now. Basically, we have in the Bowie Crossing section, we have our restaurant row. We have the aging theater that's no longer in operation. We have a Hampton Hotel. We also have the parking lot, park and ride lot owned by the county. Across the way, we certainly have our Macy's. We have United Furniture as well as we, the Barnes and Noble and other tenants in the south parcel of the property. We also have Mill Branch Park and Pond, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. But what we can see in this picture is we also have a huge opportunity. One of the great things about this is its location. It's located right off Route 50 and Route 197. The roadway infrastructure is there that can support the Bowie Town Center and further development. There is a sister city to the Bowie Town Center in Virginia called Sherrington Village. Sherrington Village is on 395. It's nestled the same way the Bowie Town Center is. They too were faced with the challenge of how do they revitalize their town center years ago? They went forward and started a plan, same way we're talking about tonight, meeting with the community, talking to the property owners and looking at what was possible and developing a long range plan. Like Sherrington Village, Bowie has one large employer, which is located across the street from the Bowie Town Center, Innovation. In Sherrington Village, their large property owner and employer is WETA. I'm sure you've also seen the WETA building as you drive down the roadway. Okay. They took a plan and started slowly but surely, and they've modified it over time to in fact reinstate, rebuild the Sherrington Village to now is a thriving shopping center as a thriving restaurant row. I visited there on Sunday evening and 10:30 at night, their restaurants were still open. They included various elements that in fact brings out the community on a regular basis, including concerts and then other venues, vendors to participate in the activities. But it shows what's possible. Sherrington Village is a model of what we can possibly do and the folks in Arlington County are also willing to in fact share their strategies with us if we would like and how they went about developing, redeveloping Sherrington Village. Next slide. This is looking at Bowie Crossing and the high density vision plan. This plan looks at the possibility of luxury, luxury apartments as well as rent other apartments, a possible hotel in the corner property, commercial spaces with mixed use or ground floor retail, sorry, ground floor retail and up, upper floors would be either commercial offices and/or apartments depending upon the structure. Next slide. This is another concept of Bowie Crossing in a different format. And this is looking at Bowie Crossing as being developed as a entertainment complex and sports complex to generate revenue for the city of Bowie. The large green area is in fact a model of a Topgolf or a golf shack driving range. The second building is a model of Meow, Meow Mix, I forget what they call themselves. Anyway. Thank you. And the building in front of that is parking. The corner structure is in fact an indoor sports facility. Okay. These are ideas. Ironically, I recently visited the Topgolf location in Germantown. If you take the Germantown Topgolf location, put it right here, it would mimic what we actually have right now today. We have four restaurants across the street from the golf facility. They have a hotel, there's the Fairfield Hotel, ours is the Hampton Hotel. And then they have another commercials, another apartment complex. But we could do exactly what they did and have a thriving business right there. Next slide. Okay. This is an aerial view of looking at Bowie Crossing from different angles. Next slide. Okay. Now we're looking at Bowie Township proper. As you see, there are a number of spaces here and just to give you an upside picture, in this proposed vision, there are 27 parks, green sites and play areas. So in fact, if in fact we do a mixed use development there and people are living there, there are plenty of park space and opportunities. It's also a great place that folks are going to want to visit on a regular basis. Okay. You also see in the corner there near Mill Branch Pond, a possible amphitheater. This is theoretic, but it's possible in fact provide another venue for in fact revenue generation and a place for in fact local residents in fact enjoy Mill Pond. Next slide. This is looking at all the green space as well as our placemaking locations. The blue areas are placemaking locations where in fact would have a mix of a open area playground type facility, open air theater, possibly a playhouse. And in the four corner there, again, more play areas. Basically, this shows also new arteries through the development that in fact will be tree lined. Okay. Next slide. This is showing the impact on some of the areas as it currently exists. Again, we are not suggesting in any way, shape or form that any of our tenants, our anchor tenants, our retailers move or relocate. That's up to them. That's for consideration. This is just showing a possibility, possible impact on those sites, but also showing the additional green sites that will be made available. Next slide. Okay. This is looking at one, the north end of the Bowie Town Center, that in fact could also be a playmaking area, placemaking area. Placemaking areas draw people for various events. This past weekend at Pike and Rose, they're in the placemaking area, they had a, it was a farmer's market. At, at Merryweather, in Merryweather District, their placemaking area this past weekend had a, the Spanish Heritage Festival. Okay. Interesting to note, the placemaking area in Merryweather Pavilion was created in large part in collaboration between Howard County as well as the corporation that owned that lot. The decision to locate a Bus Boys and Poets to that area was made by their corporate CEO based upon the fact of looking at the placemaking opportunities and saying, we want to be part of that community. We want to be there for that. And so they've located a Bus Boys and Poets to that area. Incidentally, in Sherrington Village, across from the placemaking location operated by Arlington County is also a Bus Boys and Poets. I don't know if that's an ominous sign or what, but wouldn't we like to have a Bus Boys and Poets in the city of Bowie? And by the way, the Bus Boys and Poets in Merry, Merryweather Pavilion, excuse me, is also an entertainment complex. It's a two level building, has a restaurant downstairs, it has an auditorium upstairs. They do book readings there. I recently attended a concert there and they also support the yearly book festival that takes place in Orange Birds Park, right across the street from the Bus Boys and Poets. Next slide. This is another location for placemaking and I will attribute the one sculpture here to Gemini, Gemini Computer System and the KDI developers. This is a model basically of This is a model basically of, they call the Switch Point. Basically, it's a model of how to reflect the history of Bowie, its reverent history and its ongoing history to the community. Okay? Next slide. Okay. This is again showing Bowie Town Center in different phases. As we can talk about it, there will not be an immediate development of any sort, certainly, but it will take place in phases. So who knows when and what will be taking place, but in fact, it'll be done in phases though at different times, some parts might be under construction, other parts might not. Next slide. Okay. This is showing various avenues within the Bowie Township, showing the number of mixed-use apartments as well as parking lots, above-ground parking lots, and showing the tree exposure as well. As you can see from the avenues, they are well-divided, well-lit, they're walkable communities. They're designed to in fact be walker-friendly and very usable. It's also designed to be in fact a place people are going to want to come to on a regular basis. They're going to tell their friends, hey, this weekend, come down to Bowie because we've got great restaurants, we've got great restaurant, recreation opportunities, come down and enjoy Bowie, as opposed to having to travel to Washington DC, enjoy the Washington DC traffic and enjoy the Annapolis traffic. Bowie Town Center is a great alternative to that in the future. Next slide. Okay. Again, different angles of the shopping-dinner development on the north end. One drawing of this, one of these buildings being, the ground floor being a grocery store. As you know, we have a Safeway currently. It's very possible with the level of density that will occur here, that a second grocery store may also want to locate. This would also be space for commercial usage, offices, as well as potential for medical facilities as well as possibly, and maybe a joint facility to be used by Prince George's County Community College as well as Bowie State for classroom operations and services and trainings on this site. Next slide. Okay. This is looking at the overall area, again, from this air. As you can see, basically, we have the roadway arteries in place, we don't need to do much there, and where there might be a future opportunity or need, actually, Maryland Transportation has already purchased that land and basically it's assumed they're ready for development. So again, the impact on roadways is minimal. The great thing about a mixed-use development at this site, our residents want growth, but they want safe growth, they want smart growth, and they don't want growth necessarily in their neighborhoods. This is a way to keep that growth centered north of the city, near the major arteries, major roadways, so that in fact people can take bus transportation rapidly to in fact New Carrollton and/or to the Art Train Station. Ironically, the location for us that we saw as the great model for Bowie is in fact the Mosaic District in Fairfax County. The Mosaic District, they look at as a two-hub location for transportation because the two-hub is basically the residential center for those who are being transported to the Dooling and Merrifield Metro Station, which is 11 minutes away. The New Carrollton Town Center, New, excuse me, Metro Center for Bowie is 15 minutes away. So in fact, these are workable communities. The Merrifield location is up and running and is a wondrous desire and design. For that matter, and as we looked at that location, and we evaluated all the sites we looked at, it was the number-one selection of the committee because of all of amenities. It had the right mix of brand, national brands, as well as local retailers. It had Barnes and Noble, it had a Target, it had grocery stores, it had a walkable community, it was a well-planned community, and it had infrastructure well in place as well as retail on the lower floor and apartments on the above floors. And from everyone we saw, they all looked very happy and very content to be in that neighborhood. Next slide. Okay. Again, another angle of the Bowie Town Center and its possible locations. As you can see, the green arteries, the play areas are well balanced throughout the facility. So basically, there's lots of folks for places to in fact, people to hang out on the weekends. Next slide. This again, this is to show you basically the potential parking locations. As we're looking at, we're looking at above-ground structures for parking. Those Ps represent parking. All those parking lots would be basically behind the apartments, so basically they would not visually be seen from the exterior, but would be behind the parking. That was a concept that we took from Merrifield, because in fact, that Mosaic District, that's exactly how they do theirs. You rarely, you only see one parking lot in that development, and that's only if you walk down the street. But in their location, you see apartments, you see restaurants, and you see entrances between them to the parking areas, but you don't see the parking lot, they're not visual to you. So they don't take away from the beauty of the area. Next slide. Okay. This is again a concept paper for the parking areas. I will tell you that one in the right side left frame is in fact a parking structure that is now in Merrifield. These are visuals from other locations around the area. But basically, these are very artistically done parking structures. The whole idea basically is when you have a parking structure, make it part of the scenery. Don't make it an eyesore. Next slide. Okay. And that would be it. Again, this is a concept paper for review and consideration. It's to start a conversation, is to lead to a new future for the Bowie Town Center. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Kennedy. I'm here to do the briefest part of this presentation. Thank you all for your time and patience this evening. I wanted to say first of all, thanks to the city staff and the city consultants who put in a lot of time on this presentation, as well as my fellow committee members. I'm here as a representative of the private development community to talk about broad strokes of process associated with these ideas. So as some of my other committee members have said, the goal here tonight is just to lay out a broad vision, even though we do have a lot of detail in the packet that was covered. The main idea is just to open the council's minds to the kinds of possibilities that are out there and to help get you all focused on the next steps that will be needed to implement these ideas at some point in the future. As Michael had said, there are several things you can be doing, although it is important to keep in mind that this project, like a lot of the example projects we talked about, can take a while to come to fruition fully, up to 20 years or maybe even more in some cases. But to have a positive approach from the city, something that's kind of easy for you to wrap your mind around in broad categories, and something that you could have put out there to the business community as what the city is willing to say yes to, would be very helpful for being positioned to take advantage of opportunities to redevelop as they come along. So these are my bullet points. It's a long-term strategic project for the city. It could take 20 years or more to come to fruition. However, being ready now, in addition to having some community support for the broad outlines of an idea, will help position the city to be ready to move quickly when an actual redevelopment for all or part of the town center comes up. So as Michael in particular had said, there are certain things that can be done by the city council to work with the state legislators and particularly with the county council and the county park and planning authority to set up zoning mechanisms now that will allow for flexibility in the future, should an opportunity arise. Currently in the zoning code, in addition to the recent Bowie Mitchellville Master Plan that was approved, there is a mechanism called a planned development zone, so you essentially can rezone a given property with special provisions to allow for more flexibility in uses as well as more control, either through the city or through the county government for a given project. And I think it would be beneficial to the city to at least take the initial steps of digging in with land use council, with other consultants, to try to see if there are very particular things that the council is interested in, any type of redevelopment here, and what could be done legislatively at the county or state level to put those things into place now. So that's a major consideration we wanted to put before you today. And really, that's all I had. I'm here to answer questions afterward, and otherwise, I'm going to pass it back to our chairman for closing remarks. Thank you all.
Good evening again. All right, so here we go. You've seen big possibilities, right? Our footprint is way bigger than Meriwether, than all the different town centers that we looked at, Meriwether, Mosaic, and Pike and Rose. All right, so we could go horizontal and we could go vertical, right? So we're not constrained by space. So what's the takeaway? I would like to leave you with three takeaways. The core takeaway, number one, the core takeaway is that we must shift to an actual mixed-use environment, all right, creating a built-in customer base that will attract anchor stores, including high-end restaurants, groceries, and department stores. Remember, we've done several projects, and one of the items that came out was that, well, you know, if we need a high-end restaurant, we need the density. Currently, we don't have the density, right? Number two, we need a significant attraction, a regional appeal that will pull in visitors from across Prince George's County and beyond. So part of the design you saw, Mia Wolf, different options were suggested, right? Topgolf and others, you know, aquatic facility, et cetera. So what is it that we could put into Bowie Town Center, whether it's Bowie Crossing or particularly Bowie Crossing? What can we put there that would become a regional appeal? All right? So we have some suggestions, it's not the only suggestion, obviously. We could take this over, mull over it, then come up with something that fits Bowie, the Bowie residents. Number three, we currently possess the knowledge to be proactive and reimagine our town center as a regional destination and plan for the long-term value for our residents and businesses. In closing, this is a vision concept for reimagining Bowie Town Center as more than just a shopping space, but as a regional destination and a proud gathering place for our community. This is a call to action, and we must be proactive in investing in Bowie's future by making the Bowie Town Center a regional destination. We are submitting this conceptual vision to you for review and consideration and to determine how we should proceed. This design will be accomplished in a phased approach, like my colleague have said. If we fail to act, Bowie Town Center risks further decline, and it will struggle to compete with neighboring centers because they're developing. That would mean frustration for our residents and a loss of opportunity for our city. This is why it's important to act now, to reimagine Bowie Town Center as a regional destination and a proud part of our community. With that in mind, we recommend the following. Number one, engage with state and county elected officials to emphasize the city's expectations and prioritize priorities for legislative action to promote the city's redevelopment goals for Bowie Town Center. Number two, City of Bowie to initiate a Bowie Town Center redevelopment task force to coordinate community engagement, planning, and investment. Number three, hold at least one community stakeholder meeting, stakeholders meeting. Number four, commission a market feasibility study to identify optimal uses and develop interests, developers' interests. Number five, explore financing and partnership structure to support infrastructure upgrade. And number six, engage with anchor property owners to align redevelopment goals and timelines. So this is it for, as far as the reporting for the Bowie Town Center reimagination. It's, we think it's a necessary plan, and thank you for giving us this task.
All right. I'd like to say thank you for your presentation, and we as a council appreciate all the information. We'll have a chance to digest and look at it, and then discuss further those steps. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the Police Department update. Police Chief Dwayne Preston will be presenting.
We can circle back and have an actual discussion here after we've done it, yes. We can circle back and have them, and actually have a discussion after we've digested on that's good presentation.
That's great.
That's good. That's what we need, that futurist.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Time for our update to the council, and what I wanted to do is start off with some updates on personnel. So we currently are authorized to have 70-some officers. There's a slight correction on the memo that was sent to you. Instead of the actual, we actually have 58 officers. That includes the officers that, we have two pre-hires waiting for an academy, and we have two officers that are currently in the academy. One is slated to graduate later this month, and the other ones in the academy will be graduating in the spring of 2026, which leaves us with 12 vacancies. It'll end up being 13 later this month. Unfortunately, one of our officers is relocated from Jacksonville, Florida to Bowie, but didn't work out for him and his family situation, so he is going back to his previous employer with the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office back in Jacksonville. So his last day will be next week. Civilian staff, we are authorized, we actually authorized 22 and a half positions, that includes the two new cadet positions. We're currently scheduling those to be for interviews, and we have four vacancies, two dispatch vacancies and the two cadet vacancies that I mentioned. Continuing in that vein about personnel, we did have six members that separated from service with the department since our last reporting. We had two officers that left us and joined Prince George's County Police Department, and we had two officers that separated service based upon injuries, and two student officers that were in police academies that did not make it through their training and therefore were separated. So as much of a challenge and success we are seeing with our recruitment efforts, there is still a challenge that exists with getting them successfully through a police academy. And so there's several hurdles, but we continue to work through those to bring accompliment up to 70. We have one officer that is on light duty, has a slight wrist injury, so that should not keep him out much longer. And we have two officers that are on administrative leave based upon investigations that are involving them that keeps them. involving them that keeps them on administrative leave at this point. Sergeant Anika Howard, as I mentioned earlier, was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, so we have no more vacancies in our command staff, and that keeps that issue on personnel. As we're moving to calls for service, in 2024, the Police Department handled 30,709 calls for service year-to-date. Through August 31st, 2025, we've handled 22,883 calls for service. So we're on pace to handle 34,323 calls this year, an increase of about 11.7%. We're seeing some good progress with our crime reductions. It's a tale of two stories between violent crime and property crime. While property crime still remains to be the majority of our challenge, we've seen a slight uptick in violent crime, but in the violent crime, we did have two homicides this year. One was a domestic-related homicide, and the other was the one involving the young lady that was reported missing originally from the Hidesfield area. We found that that incident actually did occur here within the city of Bowie. Both of those have been, cases have been closed by arrest. And one of the things that is a little disturbing is the trend that we're seeing throughout Prince George's County and the state that's really driving our violent crime numbers is the increase in the incidence of domestic violence. And we're seeing a significant increase in the number of domestic violence cases that we're handling in calls for service. Bear with me, I got my, get to that slide here. So for reference, in 2024, from the time period of January 1st until October 6th, we handled 348 calls for service for domestic violence. Compared to 2025, the same time period, we've already handled 424 calls for service, so a 21.8% increase. Also, over that same time period, our arrests, we've had 23 arrests in 2024 for the same time period, and then this year thus far, we've already had 34 arrests for domestics. So that's a 47.8% increase in arrests. So we're taking some steps to educate the community. We are partners with the Prince George's County Family Justice Center. We have a kiosk in our lobby to allow services to be offered to victims of domestic violence. And what we're going to do is use our community services unit to start to follow up and to track to see if we're having repeat calls of service for incidents of domestic violence, to see if there's additional referrals or services that we can offer to try to abate those issues. We can't really pin the true nature of what's causing the increase in the domestic violence, but as we continue to work with all of the partners throughout the county and the state, you know, we will try to pin that down. For traffic, we've handled 332 crashes thus far, January through August. We've had two fatal crashes in the city. One was on 197. The other one was down in Old Bowie on 11th Street. One of them was involving a pedestrian, the other one in Old Bowie was involving a vehicle that, for some unknown reason, crossed the center line and collided with a vehicle coming the opposite direction. We've had 2,204 traffic stops. Officers have written 869 citations, issued 2,598 traffic warnings, and issued 323 equipment repair orders, made 22 arrests for driving under the influence. Our crashes have decreased by 2% compared to the same time last year. Traffic stops increased by 38% compared to this time last year. So we've made a very concerted effort. We have a bi-weekly crime meeting that Deputy Chief Librality leads, and the focus is on the areas in which we're seeing the number of complaints that we have for traffic-related speeding complaints and things of that sort. So we're trying to direct our resources in that area as well as working as part of the traffic management work group. Impaired driving crashes increased 38% compared to this time last year. Impaired driving arrests increased 14%. Citations up 11%, warnings up 19%, and repair orders up by 4%. As it relates to speed cameras, in 2024, 55,973 violations were recorded. 2025, year-to-date, we've had 28,610. That's, we're on pace, if you do the estimates, of issuing 42,915 for the year of 2025, which is on pace to be a 23.15% reduction. So what I take from that is that they're working and slowing drivers down in areas where the speed cameras are located. So it seems that the program is working to reduce speeding, so we will continue to monitor those numbers and work with the traffic management work group to bring those numbers down. Our community services team, as always, is one of the busiest units that we have within the PD. They handle all of the community events. They do all of the citizens' police academies. They backfill for patrol when training is needed. They're the jack-of-all-trades and do everything, so I'm not going to go through the list of the many events that they have there, but there's numerous there. And one of the last things I did want to cover was the outstanding work of our criminal investigation section. They've had a tremendous success in closing cases where there are actual leads that can be followed that resulted in an arrest. So out of 83 cases that were actually assigned that have solvability factors, we actually closed seven of those cases for 84.3% closure rate, which is outstanding, all right? And so diligent work. There's some examples in the packet that you received with highlights, which highlight some of those cases that were closed. But the most notable one that was, the city was actually a victim of, was the copper thefts from the parks at Jericho Park and Black Sox Park, where the city suffered losses of approximately $300,000 with the copper wiring that was stolen from the light poles on the fields. Working in collaboration with area law enforcement, a suspect was identified and arrested, and we attributed those cases to him. So those cases will be closed with an arrest. And one of the last things I did want to report is that, you know, we're doing a pretty decent job in reducing violent crime. We get a daily crime report, as Prince George's County Police Department does on our behalf, which tracks all of the calls for service on a daily basis, and that update goes out daily. And even though violent crime is trending, you know, higher this year, that's a small sample size in terms of the number of violent crimes we actually have occurring, and that number is being driven by domestic violence mostly. The most important thing to us is, property crime has always been a significant challenge for us, and over the last couple of years, we've seen the increases specifically in theft from autos continue to climb. So I'm happy to report, even despite the fact that in January, within the first couple of days of January, we suffered over 30 theft from autos in one night. So we started off behind in the calendar year, but we've worked hard from that point to now to report that we're actually in a negative column with theft from autos. And so we're on pace, violent, property crime right now is down 14%. And so we continue to push that number, continue to drive that down, and I'm confident that those numbers will continue to decline. So the last thing I did want to talk about is complaints. As you know, a couple of years ago, House Bill 670 changed the way in which police departments investigate complaints from citizens, and it takes away the responsibility or it takes away the authority from the chief to initiate discipline. And it replaces it with an administrative charging committee that is panelled by the county executive and selected. And so they are, what we do is we complete the investigation for any citizen complaints, and we submit it to the administrative charging committee based upon a statewide matrix. And they set for the discipline. So out of that, we've had 13 complaints in 2025 that were investigated. And out of that, we had two that were, I'm sorry, two that were sustained policy violations. Three were administratively closed. Two of those complaints, the officers were exonerated, two that were non-sustained, and we have two that are currently open. So, you know, again, most of our complaints are, and those complaints range from anything from motor vehicle accident. If it's involving a citizen, it has to be investigated, so it doesn't necessarily denote misconduct, but anything that's involving a citizen, an accident or something, is counted in those numbers and has to be fully investigated and submitted to the administrative charging committee. But those numbers are still relatively small compared to the number of calls for service that we handle on an annual basis. So that's a quick summary of the report that I have for you. Open to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Chief, so very much for what you all do and for that information provided. I will start off with a couple of really quick questions that I think go to you, but also to staff as well and the city manager, and that is, number one, we know we have those two vacancies for dispatchers. A question I have is, are we looking to incentivize those positions like we do our normal police officers?
So we do have incentives attached to those positions, and we work with the city manager as well as HR Director to have a signing bonus for dispatchers as well. It's not as much as it is for sworn officers, but we do have a signing bonus attached to that to attract, as well as the referral bonus that we do offer as well if anyone refers a candidate to us that we successfully hire.
Okay, thank you. Another thing I will, I'm putting the cart before the horse here, but bear with me, and that is regarding one of the pieces of legislation that we just passed, and that is about, you know, making it a chargeable offense for setting up encampments and things of that nature on the streets and other places and all. Your feeling on that? As we pass it now and you look at it, do you think that will end up with a greater impact for you?
I would say this, and then I would defer to Deputy Chief Librality, because he worked principally on this, the legislation with our city attorney. I know that dealing with the issue of homelessness is something that is a challenge, and it's been a growing concern here within the city. We work directly with Jesse Bugs and his team to address it. It gives us another tool that we hope we don't have to utilize, but it's a tool that was needed to be implemented to help us to combat this issue. So I turn it over to Deputy Chief Librality for the issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, as the chief said, this is a tool for our toolbox. We have a very limited, I guess, way of going toward arrests. I mean, arrest is our last-ditch effort. I've talked to Jesse, Mr. Bugs, very much about this bill. In fact, I talked to him today, and to quote him, he said he is 100% for it. We do everything in our power and in his power to make references, to help people out, to give them the opportunities for shelter, give them things like cell phones, give them opportunities to, you know, look for employment, things like that. Unfortunately, in several cases, we're faced with, you know, severe mental illness, and when that crosses with, you know, our citizens' use of parks and common areas like that, we get complaints. So we get complaints, everything from public nudity to assaults and things like that. And again, I'm talking about very, very small, minute cases. So we wanted this tool in our toolbox so that if we've gone through every other avenue, we do have the ability to arrest someone where currently, right now, it was just a code violation, which would be handled with a citation. So we don't foresee using this anytime soon. It's just something that we've got now if the need should ever come.
Chief, a follow-up to that, and then I will let the council members begin their engagements. And she might question that. That is, once upon arrest, is there the option of people being taken directly to a mental health facility like we have at Doctor's Hospital? Or does it have to be taken to the jail and then referred from there?
There's two options. Of course, if we have someone that's a danger to themselves or others in our presence, we can take them to a hospital and commit them for emergency psychiatric evaluation. If we don't go that avenue and we go with an arrest, we have to provide them with the opportunity to see a district court commissioner. District Court Commissioner will determine if there's enough probable cause for the charge, number one, and number two, whether the person's going to be held under bond or released. Most, in nearly every minor case, they're released unless there's some violent history or some extreme history of missing court. That being said, the, once we have made an arrest, we have a good relationship with our state's attorney's office. We make the recommendation to move a case to mental health court, and in that situation, and I'm sure you know from your wife, it's, they take those cases and they handle them differently, and they're given a different resource track.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions from council members? Council member DeFoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks for the presentation. Very much appreciate all the work that you've put in and the good work that the community benefits from on a daily basis. So kudos to you, and of course, welcome to the new officers. Glad to see them. Unfortunately, we still would like to see more, so keep those efforts going. Couple of quick questions. New locations for cameras? I know that we have increase in dollar fines that are, we'll talk about in the next session, but location changes, opportunities to expand, where are we with that?
So, well, we just, we just did a study for Mitchellville Road for an additional location that has been approved thus far, so we're waiting for the vendor to locate a temporary pad. So that'll probably be in the next rotation. We just did a rotation in beginning of this month, so there won't be any additional changes until the end of the year. We are still waiting for approval for the state roadways down in Old Bowie on 11th Street. That is required from the state before we can place a camera at that location, but there is one that has already been approved by you all for 11th Street. We just wait, need to wait for the approvals from the state on that. We're currently working, Public Works is doing a study on Quill Point Drive to evaluate a potential location for there, and so we will wait the results of that study to determine if a camera will be suitable for that location. One of the things that the traffic management work group discusses on a monthly basis, if a speed camera is not necessarily the solution, what other traffic calming measures may need to be considered. And so whether it's the traffic signs, whether it's traffic trailers, even some of the road calming devices, all of those things and options are discussed, and it's one of those things that we will do what's necessary to try to have an impact on the traffic-related issues that are impacting our residents in the city. But we don't want to just approach the vendor with, you know, every particular street as an option to evaluate for a speed camera. There are a lot of factors that go into the evaluation for suitability, the topography, curvature of the road, excuse me, et cetera. curvature of the road, excuse me, etc. So, so every street is not necessarily suitable for a speed camera. But those that might meet the criteria, we make those recommendations to the vendor for evaluation.
Has, has the team looked at Trinity or could they look at Trinity?
I have to look back at my notes, but I believe that Trinity was evaluated, but I have to, I will follow up with you to let you know if that has been studied. And if not, we will take a look at it to see if it's, you know, worthy of a study for that.
Thank you. Next thing is 197. I, I know that that continues to be a source of many accidents over the years. It's been kind of a hotspot. How are we doing? Has anybody changed in, in accident rates on 197, particularly in the area where it's two lanes and going through between 450 and 50?
So we do have a speed camera that pretty much stays in place, that's right there at Tasker on both directions. So pretty much the, the pattern has been is that we don't really rotate the cameras that are in school zones, especially during schools, when school times. So when we do a rotation, we were only rotating maybe three or four cameras out of the 12 that we have. So those cameras, the other camera down close to Rockledge Elementary on 197, you know, remains in place. So, you know, those are pretty much staples, especially along 450 and in front of Bowie High School and Pius. Those cameras stay in place most of the time.
Okay. Actually, what I was trying to get to was just accidents in general, not necessarily related to the, to the cameras. Do we have any track record on what's happening at Old 450, New 450, 197, Long Ridge, up to Ken Hill?
I have to do some research on that, council member, and get back to you.
That'd be fine.
To see what I mean.
Excellent. Thank you. Very much appreciate it. And thank you for your good work on getting that legislation through for the, for the changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Esther?
I was gonna chime in and thank chief, deputy chief and your whole team. You guys have been punching well above your weight. I say this every single time you give an update, but a typical city our size would have, I think, about two and a half times as many officers as we do. The fact we have so few is both a credit to our historically low crime rate, for which I think Bowie residents, and, and those who choose not to come and commit crime here and go elsewhere, I suppose. But also, it's just a reality of the recruitment challenges we have, keeping up with even our minimum number of officers. On that front, you guys have been punching well above your weights, competing with much larger departments and agencies, including all of our friends down at the feds. We had six officers sworn in tonight, as we saw. And I know we have some more vacancies to fill, but you really have been going above and beyond in recruitment efforts. So I continue to encourage you in those. I continue to thank you for your tremendous service to the city. We certainly have our challenges, but we are not challenged in the area of personnel when it comes to policing, and for that, I am deeply grateful.
Thank you, councilman.
Appreciate it.
Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me dovetail off of one of the items that the mayor raised at the very beginning. It has to do with the issue about homeless encampments and what have you. I look at it, I understand the problem and I understand there needs to be a solution. But at the same time, there needs to be a humanity in how we deal with it. And I was made aware of this about six weeks ago. My wife, a coworker, posted on Facebook, this is in DC. You know, about six weeks ago, they went through, DC trash went through and the National Guard went through and was cleaning up the streets. And this one post dealt with a woman who had left her encampment to go get, to get drugs, it's not drugs, but Safeway, go get something or go get food. And when she came back, the whole area was cleared. Everything she owned that was in her tent was thrown in the trash truck and hauled away. And she was extremely distraught and she probably was, besides being economically disadvantaged, she was probably possibly mentally, mental issues. But, but the person who was writing about this went on about how this person was devastated by this act when, you know, it's not an issue about she doesn't, she shouldn't be on the streets, but rather, how do we better do it? I just hope we have and maintain an issue of humanity when we deal with these peoples as we go forward on this. And it sounds like from what you've described, that, that is part of the equation. Chief?
That's correct, councilman. One of the things, and I think Deputy Chief Librati mentioned it earlier, the police department tries to work in support of the efforts of Mr. Bugs and his team. And so we work hand in hand and the first option is to try to find suitable housing for those that are unhoused, if they're willing. We work with the property owners for those on private property to, to try to remedy the situation. And in those cases, removal of any property that is their responsibility of the property owner. So the ordinance that was discussed this evening only contains the city-owned property in which, you know, the city has a right to remove. And even in those cases, you know, we, you know, took a great effort, Deputy Chief Librati with the city attorney, to really, really lay out a process to safeguard the property of those if we do have to remove it in a way to allow them to come and recover those items that, that they have rightful ownership to. Obviously, we have to consider being able to safely store those items so that, you know, we don't expose any of our employees to anything, you know, that may be harmful or to contaminate any facilities to make sure that we're able to properly maintain those property items. So that is utmost concern to us is to make sure that we preserve their rights and their property. And we will work with them prior to having to, like, like we said before, making an arrest or removing someone's property is a last ditch effort. Generally, most of these situations are repeated calls for service that we've had encounters with them on numerous occasions before a final act is determined to be taken.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And, and that's, to be honest with you, what I kind of would have expected was the philosophy of the police department. So not at all surprised with that, which leads me into a nice segue. When we started the police department so many years ago, there were some expectations and some, some apprehension too, because it's starting a big. But I can tell you that where we are today is, we're much better and further ahead than what I thought we'd start off with many years ago. So I think it's a, a result of a lot of good effort by many people in the department. And to that end, I'd like to ask you to extend all the members of the department our thanks and appreciation for a job well done. They keep the city safe. They do it in a very responsible and professional way, and it reflects whenever I talk to constituents about that. So please do extend our thanks to them.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman, you're welcome. Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, chief. Quick question. There was a law passed on, by the Merlin Legislature that was increasing the amount of fines as a result of the speed cameras. How does that impact us here in Bowie? Thank you.
So the city attorney drafted legislation to add to the city for approval, to add to the code, to allow us to enact that. So it's a graduated fine. I know I had a particulars in front of me, but if you're a certain miles per hour over, it goes, the minimum fine is $40 for, it doesn't matter if you're 30 miles per hour over currently or 50 miles per hour over the speed limit, the maximum fine was $40. This allows, based upon your speed, to have a graduated fine system that was passed, as you, as you mentioned, by the legislature. So we would just be following that, that schedule as recommended. And that's all laid out in the actual ordinance. You have the details on it?
I, I will add that most of violations are in the lower tier, the lowest tier. So most of that is going to remain at $40. You're going to see a, a couple of percentages that'll jump up into the next tier. Very few violations are over 20 and up. So when you get to the 40 miles an hour over at $425 a violation, you'd have to be going, you know, 65 miles an hour down a residential 25 mile an hour street, which is, you know, almost impossible.
Great. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say thank you, Chief Preston, deputy chief and your entire police department, civilians, everyone who works with it. Again, we appreciate you keeping us safe. And again, it was an honor to be able to swear in those new officers, from me and the council. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
All right. We will now move on to item D, Covington Oaks Preliminary Plan of Subdivision, PPS dash 2024 dash 010 and Detailed Site Plan, 2024 005. This is eligible for action.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Riddon Wong Coker here, the city's transportation planner, here to introduce this preliminary plan of subdivision and detailed site plan for Covington Oaks. This project consists of approximately 2.34 acres of land located on the north side of Elder Oaks Boulevard, approximately 215 feet east of its intersection with Excalibur Road. The street address is 3610 Elder Oaks Boulevard, Bowie, Prince George's County, Maryland, 20716. This preliminary plan of subdivision and detailed site plan proposes the development of 48 two-family residential dwelling units, two-over-two dwellings in the RMF 20 zone. This use is permitted in the residential multifamily 20 zone, subject to applicable standards found in section 27 dash 4202 of the Prince George's County zoning ordinance. We do have a presentation to show you all today that Mr. Matthew Tedesco, representing the applicant Collington Place, will be presenting shortly. The Bowie Advisory Planning Board met on September 24th to hear this case, which they unanimously moved to approve this preliminary, preliminary plan of subdivision and detailed site plan in accordance with staff recommendations. The county planning board is set to hear this preliminary plan of subdivision on October 9th and the detailed site plan on October 23rd. With that, staff recommends approval of both the preliminary plan of subdivision, PPS dash 2024 dash 010 and detailed site plan, DET dash 2024 dash 005, with the following condition, request the applicant to increase active transportation, safe walking and bicycling along the corridor of Elder Oaks Boulevard. That concludes staff presentation and I will hand it over to Mr. Matthew Tedesco.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, good evening. Mr. Mayor Perrett, members of the council. For the record, Matthew Tedesco, the law firm at McNamee Hosey and Greenbelt here on behalf of Collington Place LLC, subsidiary of the Kalivus Group, represented this evening by Mr. Andy Kalivus. Mr. Kalivus is in the audience. If you could just wave. I know many of you are familiar with, with Mr. Kalivus. Also with us this evening, we have the members of the development team from Site Design Inc., Mr. Mark Ferguson, our civil engineering firm for the project. From Lenhart Traffic and Consulting, we have Dylan McAndrew, the traffic engineers. From my office, Ms. Dominique Lockhart, who's our senior land planner. And from Schaefer Homes, Mr. Jim Schaefer, the president of Schaefer Homes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's, it's really my privilege to be before you this evening on this application, or applications, excuse me, as Mr. Coker indicated, we're here on both the preliminary plan of subdivision as well as the detailed site plan. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mr. Coker and Mr. Hall for their review and their efforts in this application. We've met with Mr. Hall. Mr. Coker's been wonderful to work with, with respect to preparing these applications, both for you all this evening as well as for the Bowie Advisory Planning Board, which we appeared before just a few weeks ago on September 24th, who did recommend support and approval of both of these applications. But I wanted to just take a moment for the board, the council's, excuse me, edification on just how we got here, because there is a story here. And I think it's important. It's not in the materials. You can kind of glean a little bit from it from our justification statement, but certainly would understand with your hectic agenda and all the materials that you have before you've, if you didn't read every single page of our 100-plus statement of justification. Mr. Kalivus and his partners have owned this property a little more than 15 years. And the property has a long history with respect to its entitlements. It was part of a comprehensive design zone for the broader area around the, the subject property on Elder Oaks. This particular parcel was, was envisioned to be developed consistently and with the property to the north, which is on your screen, which is the multifamily project. It's about 220 units, tonneed to the northwest of the property. This piece was previously in the local activity center zone, which is a comprehensive design zone, was approved, subdivided and entitled for up to 20,000 square feet of commercial development. That obviously never came to fruition. When Mr. Kalivus purchased the property, it was still located in that LAC zone. And then came, came in 2018, the county's new zoning ordinance. The county's new zoning ordinance basically replaced all the, the previous zones. However, it could not be implemented until the county went through a comprehensive rezoning of the entire county. As a result of that effort, the property was rezoned to the CGO zone, Commercial General Office. That occurred, or took effect, I should say, on April 1st, 2022. At that time, consolidated storage was a permitted use in the CGO zone. As this council is well aware, as well as the county council is well aware, initially there was a lot of interest, I'm choosing my words carefully, there was a lot of interest in consolidated storage units in the CGO zone, maybe too much interest. And I think both on the county level as well as the city level, it got the ire of many of our politicians as well as many of the community leaders and, and folks, not only in Bowie, but throughout the county. As a result of that, and I should say, Mr. Kalivus had a contract with the consolidated storage user for this property. By right, permitted, could move forward. However, at that time of that, in that period of time, 2022, 2023, there was a lot, as we all know, going on with consolidated storage. The law changed in 2023, CB 11. But what Mr. Kalivus did is he worked with members of this council, he worked with your staff, he worked with former members of this council who are now on the county council, as well as community leaders, many of whom are here this evening and would like to be heard. I just want to acknowledge a couple of them, Lisa's here and Duane are here, and you'll hear from them in a moment. But I could go on and on. There's a lot of community meetings, there was a lot of effort at that period of time in transition, and Mr. Kalivus heard them. And instead of me standing before you on an application for something that nobody, they didn't want, Mr. Kalivus wanted it because it was financially, economically beneficial, but heard the concerns, understood the concerns. Mr. Kalivus is a local Prince Georgian, lives in Upper Marlboro, knows the community, knows this area, and made the decision, a very difficult decision, is to pull back. Didn't have to. We could have moved forward as some projects did, but we didn't. And I think Mr. Kalivus should be applauded for that. And you'll hear from the community this evening on, on how that affected the relationship, which is a tremendously strong relationship, and how we now stand before you with this project, which, another thing occurred in 2023, which was the adoption of the Bowie and Vicinity Master Plan, which came along with that was the, was the Bowie and Vicinity sectional map amendment. And under CR 84 2023, amendment seven, this property went from CGO, purposefully went from CGO to the RMF 20, solely at the hands of the efforts of this body, Mr. Kalivus, the community and the county council. The result of those efforts was the rezoning of this property to facilitate this exact development that you have before you this evening, and that the planning board will hear later this week. Scraped was the consolidated storage, scrapped was the 20,000 square feet of commercial retail, and replaced with RMF 20 to facilitate, facilitate 48 units of two-over-two residential dwellings. There was a little bit of confusion, a little back and forth with the Bowie Advisory Planning Board, because there was a belief that 48 units meant 96 units. It's not 96 units. It's actually, if you look at a two-over-two product, it's actually, if you looked, looked at the stick, we have basically a stick that would, would appear as 24 units, but they're two-over-two stacked. And so you have 48 actual units. We have a total of 105. We have a total of 105 parking spaces, including guest parking. Each unit has its own garage. Each unit has its own driveway. And so I wanted to go through that, because I thought it was very, very important to just understand how we got here. It was a collaborative effort between a developer and the community and the community leaders, and then obviously the political arm that implements some of these views and visions. We do have a brief presentation that I can take you through, very, very brief. I know it's been a long evening. So the rendering on the screen now is the rendered plan, and you can see each of those units are numbered. So if I could just take you around, kind of from left to right, the horseshoe. That first stick is, basically would appear as a four-stick unit, but obviously there are eight separate units there. The next one, as you go up, is six, but obviously 12 units, and then five, and then nine. So 10 and 18, getting you to the 48. The one thing I would clarify on this rendering is that if you see that triangle kind of in the middle of the open space, we have since activated that area with a totlot recreational facility, playground area within that triangle. This rendering was done before that was added to the plan. We added these slides primarily just for your and the Bowie Advisory Planning Board's benefit, so that you had a good representation of. I think most people are fairly familiar with the two over two product, but just in case you weren't, we had this slide prepared. So you can see the beige is the, we'll call it the lower level, which is still a two-level, but you have a ground floor, a living with the garage, and then stairs up to the second floor. And then the blue, or the light blue, is the upper unit. The square footages of those, roughly, the bottom units are about 1,555 square feet, offer a three-bedroom living option. And then the top unit is larger, and that's a 2,273 with a four-bedroom unit. Floor plans are not approved as part of the detailed site plan, but again, just for anybody that may not have been familiar with the two over two product, we wanted to include that slide. This is a rendering, or two-dimensional, of the different model types. Elevations three, one, two, and three, just separated. They're obviously adjoining, but we have them separated here. The back of the unit, you see that there's two garage doors. One garage serves the lower unit, and the other serves the upper unit. Side elevations, you can see a lot of fenestration articulation windows, brick water table. These are the three-dimensional, kind of better representation of the models. Again, Schaefer Homes, I was neglected. I should have said this, and Jim's gonna, I can feel him behind me. But Schaefer is a local semi-custom home builder. Jim is a local builder and doing more and more in the county, but very happy to have them in the county. And this relationship between Jim and Andy can really stem from local ties with the Rotary. That's where they met and consummated this deal. So happy to have Jim in Prince George's doing this product. This is to represent just the quality of Schaefer Homes. You can see a lot of material elevations, roofline, gables, et cetera. As you come in, the lower level, there's obviously two doors. One door serves the lower unit. The other door serves the upper unit. Again, the upper unit, the benefit of the upper unit, it's a larger unit. The benefit of the lower unit is for those that maybe don't like stairs. And again, another representation of the 3D modeling of the units. And this is the third one. And fourth, this is the largest stick. So each of these represent each of those sticks I was mentioning when we went around the horseshoe, I call it. And that concludes what we had to share this evening. I did also just want to highlight, the RMF 20 zone allows up to 40 units to the acre. This development is only at 20.5 units to the acre, so it's half the density that would otherwise be allowed. We are adjacent to the Coventry Community Property. I'll call it Plan View Northeast, and then obviously the City of Bowie Property Plan View East, or West, excuse me. The property is about 200 feet east of Excalibur and obviously Elder Oaks. We did indicate to the Bowie Advisory Planning Board that we had no issues or objections to the recommended condition of approval. I will tell you, since then, the county has approved the certificate of adequacy, which does require bike ped improvements, including crosswalks and ADA ramps, which are part of the approval. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we agree with staff's recommendation. We appreciate its review of this case. This property is consistent with the zoning. It is consistent with the Bowie and Vicinity Master Plan, as well as Plan 2035. It does implement the vision that the community members, Mr. Kalivus and Schaefer Homes, plans to implement here. And we certainly hope and request your support of these applications this evening. We're, whole team's here to answer any questions. I'll do my best. If there's anything I can't answer, I might have somebody come to the mic and help me out. But thank you all for your indulgence and hopeful for your support.
This is eligible for action, so I will open the public hearing at this time. Lisa Batten.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Adams and members of the city council. My name is Lisa Baban, and I have lived in the Covington community for 28 and a half years. The journey to get to 3610 Elder Oaks Boulevard has been about a two-and-a-half-year feat. And we've been very pleased with being able to work with Mr. Kalivus and the Kalivus team and their associates. Two words that describe Covington Oaks for me are community engagement and sustainability. This has been a this has elevated or really improved community engagement for our community, because I've never seen them in this amount of time, in the 28 and a half years, engaged in what's actually happening in our community and sustainability. When I think of sustainability, I think about this new community being sustainable environmentally, because the construction will protect the natural environment and maintain natural resources, like a nearby creek that's in our community, and just the natural beauty of the Covington community. It's socially sustainable, because it will allow Covington to continue to be a walking and recreational community that allows those that presently live here and those in the future to grow. And of course, being able to grow with the new redevelopment, redesign, and regrowth of the Bowie Town Center, right? And the new police offices we've just added. And it's also economically sustainable, because the price point will allow a range of people to purchase homes, like young people who might want to become new homeowners, or even elders, to be able to purchase homes and live, as we talked about before, being to age in place with certain models. In addition, it'll improve our standard of living by increasing property values of our condos, townhouses, and single-family homes in the Covington community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any others to speak?
No, Mayor, that's all we had.
At this time, I would declare the public hearing closed. I will now afford council members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, I want to thank the applicant for being here this evening and all the good work with involvement with the community and changing. It's certainly nice to see something work out to the benefit of everybody. I hope it works out well for you and your organization as well. So kudos to you and everybody involved, as well as members of the community, for stepping forward and sharing what they thought would be best for the community. I do think you have a good product here, and I think it'll do well in very short term. Quick question. EV charging, is there any facility available for EV charging for any of the residents there? I didn't.
Councilman Wilfrey, great question. I think the short answer is yes. I'm going to have Jim Schaefer come up, and he can speak a little bit more specifically about it.
Thank you, council. Jim Schaefer, Schaefer Homes. So Maryland building codes require us that each unit in the garage has a plug for EV vehicles, so that'll become a standard issue with our homes at this point in the state of Maryland.
Excellent. I'm glad, because it makes the crossover from ICE to EV can be challenging for folks if they think they've got to make the modifications. So I'm glad to hear it's in there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
That's all for me, and thank you very much again.
Any other questions from council? Councilman Brady?
Thank you. Sorry, two questions. One of staff, let me find it, I wrote it down. In your wording, the condition, it says, "Along the corridor of Elder Oaks Boulevard", these are the safety improvements. What is the definition of the corridor?
So the vicinity of the development. So Elder Oaks Boulevard, Mitchellville Road, and there's an actual trail that goes within to the senior village, I think, Penno Parkway Village. I think that's what it's called. So that's what we mean by a corridor.
Okay, because in reading the material, I didn't have a grasp on where we were talking about, but that's helpful. Thank you. And with the applicant, can I ask? You snuck up behind that chair.
I was shortening my walk.
Did you put the rendition showing the elevations? Any one of them, it doesn't really matter.
I need help to, here we go.
There you go. I think it might be, right there, that's a good one there. Putting my engineering hat on and what have you, it just, it seems busy. It seems awkward, because you've got, what, the first one, you go up three stories for brick facade? The next one is kind of two stories and one story? Then is that kind of what's popular in the construction industry now? Or, because I'm leading into the question about, why don't you go all the way to the roof with brick? Kind of like make it a redstone?
Sure. So one, for aesthetic purposes, I like to show variation in our product. I used to design a lot of our houses. Now, this is done by Martin Architectural, which they've done quite a bit of product, an award-winning product, I might say, in Montgomery and Prince George's County. Brick at different levels. One, we're trying to keep this at a price point that people can afford. Brick does get expensive for people, so we're trying to match the products you see at South Lake and across by Rips, where that product starts in like the mid to high 400s and probably tops out at about 550. So I'm 37 years old. I really try to service the young people in our community that can't afford houses.
Right.
This is what they're going to be able to afford.
But you see the point I'm making about how kind of busy it looks from aesthetic.
I think that's a personal opinion. I don't want to argue with that. This is an architect's rendition of it. This still has to go through Prince George's County approval, and they require certain heights of brick. So I don't want to get too in the weeds with it, because it still has to go through architectural approval with the county. But we wanted to bring something that you could see. It matches what you're seeing in South Lake and across the street at 301. So, but I appreciate the feedback, and I'll take it into consideration, really. But we try to, aesthetics are something that are important to me. I don't put things on the street that I wouldn't live in. It's kind of how I look at it, so.
Right.
Yep, I appreciate it, though. Thank you.
And then the last brief question. For the record, are these owner occupied or rental?
Owner occupied.
So you'll have an HOA associated with it?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're condominiums, because they're stacked units, so you own the space. But they are occupied. We actually are, or have had initial conversations with the existing Covington HOA to annex into that. Those conversations haven't. They've been very high level, but now that the plan is getting closer to approvals, we're going to, our intent is to dig in deeper with those. Regardless of whether we annex or not, there will be an HOA associated with the open space and the community grounds. I just, I don't want to say it's going to be exclusively this, a new HOA or an annex HOA, but there will be an HOA.
Yeah, I was just going for the concern with regards to who would maintain the common areas and so have you.
Yeah, there'll be an HOA, short answer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then I'll ask mine, and we can kind of wrap up. Two-fold. Is your workforce housing based just upon the price point? Or do you actually have an incentive in trying to get workforce housing there?
I'm going to let Jim speak to that, because he's more involved in the sales component of it than me, so I'll let him speak.
Sure. I guess, I'm sorry, what is the question in relation to workforce?
We were talking about workforce housing.
Oh, for first responders.
Which we in the city encourage.
Sure, sure. So I'm the only boy in my family that's not a D.C. firefighter, a Prince George's County firefighter. So first responders is something I try to incentivize, police, fire. I have many family members that are first responders, so. Military as well, you know, we have a lot of militaries from Andrews, Fort Meade, et cetera, NSA. We try to service their needs as they move in and out of the area or establish in this area. So I try to incentivize them with, you know, extra help on closing help and things like that. But this is, this price range does suit that buyer quite well. That's who we deal with on it.
So you will specifically be attempting to recruit and get those interested in workforce housing there? There is an allotment for that?
So I don't know what you're specifically stating. This is open to any housing. I'm not targeting a certain demographic or person or anything like that. I mean, it just happens to be that typically we do service first responders. It just happens to be a type of buyer that we see at this price range, to be quite honest with you. To say it's affordable or workforce housing, I don't want to pigeonhole it into that, because it's open for sale to anyone.
Let me ask this from staff. We had passed a point where we were asking that every new development have an allotment of workforce housing. Is that not correct, city manager?
Oh, sorry. The city council did not stipulate that for every housing development. I know in some cases, you all have with Mill Branch and those places, but not with all of them.
Okay. So what I would ask is that you do get with city staff and others as you do yourselves and all, and make sure that we address that, workforce housing. And I understand being able to get those who are in public safety and the military and all an opportunity to purchase that. But I'd also like to make sure that we look at others, too, again, to have that starter home, so to speak.
Yeah.
And be able to do that.
I think we hear you, Mr. Mayor, loud and clear. And we'll definitely work with your city manager, as well as EDC, and, you know, with as far as the marketing and activating this project. I want to be careful as far as Jim indicated. I know Mill Branch and South Lake and others, they had TIFs and they had incentives, development incentives, and I think those came with certain stipulations. And this development not seeking those types of tax benefits and/or tax increment financing or any type of special deals is not able to facilitate a percentage or allocation. But absolutely, 100%, want to work to make sure the teachers are aware of the project, your local law enforcement, firefighters are aware of the project. And we market it in a way, as Jim indicated, offering a price point that's competitive and allows someone in that bracket to be able to have housing in the city. So 100%, I think we're on the same page there, absolutely.
All right. Thank you so.
Thank you, thank you all again. Thank you. Thank you all again.
Two questions from the computer.
Go ahead, please.
I'll go first because mine's pretty brief, and I want to defer to the councilman that represents this district. My question is really around the architectural design. I guess I'm just trying to understand. I'm at a crossroads. I understand that the design likely goes with the aesthetics of this area, but I guess I just want to understand how how the architectural design, how you came up with this particular design itself. Because basically, the the challenge that I'm having when I look at it is that in the next five to 10 years, that design will look very outdated to me and just with the newer developments that I see coming up online. And so I guess I'm trying to understand, like, how are you balancing preserving, you know, a future-looking, a future-forward kind of architecture that would stand the test of time and matching the current aesthetics of this area?
Well, and thank you, Councilmember, for that question. And that's the struggle when we get into these types of conversations as far as, you know, what one, I've learned in doing land use and zoning in the county for 20 years, everyone's an architect. And everyone has strong views and feelings about things and how they look. So we've tried, and I think we have hit the mark with respect to balancing the context sensitivity of the existing area, which has, you know, developed over the last 20 years. Those developments are not going anywhere. Those residential units are in place. This really is kind of the hole in the donut of that area that has remained somewhat undeveloped, notwithstanding its prior approvals. So we've tried to balance that feeling of modern with contemporary, given what's there is fairly contemporary. I dare almost want to call Mark Ferguson up here, who is part of our site design team, but also is an architect by trade. Would you like to come up and articulate your views and thoughts on the context sensitivity of of the project?
Yeah, and I will just add before he chimes in, I think because of the target audience that you're going for with these condominiums, like, it's like that, how much you lean towards modern and balancing the contemporary design of what the neighborhood currently presents is, it kind of factors. Because I know for me as a buyer, and for many in my area, we essentially would look at the design first and say, like, okay, does this make sense? Is this modern? Is this where I want to live for the next five to 10 years? And if that doesn't reflect that, then it's it's pretty, it's pretty hard to make that purchase. But please, go ahead.
Now, Councilmember, I think you're you're you raise a number of issues about how hard it is to 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 really come and settle on a on a design, whether it's a site design or an architectural design. I was actually going to compliment Mr. Tedesco because I think he really did hit on the points that 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 this project was was really struggling with. You do have, to the point of Mr. Schaefer, some limitation on what you can do with the design to distinguish it because it costs money. And keeping it affordable is very important to the buyers, and particularly in this in this kind of in this kind of market niche, if you will. I think certainly a respect to the character of the surrounding Pin Oak Village and Covington developments was very, very important. And I think you do see that reflected in the design, which which I hear in your in your in your comment. The third thing, unfortunately, from my perspective, that we all have to deal with are the expectations of the planning board. And they have gotten used to seeing a fairly conventional set of of design choices made throughout the industry. And so straying too far beyond that, while it it gets rewarded by the architecturally sensitive among us, it tends to get punished by the approval process. So I think those, that's really the only thing that I can add to Mr. Tedesco's excellent summary. But thank you.
Thank you for that. That was that was my only question. The only thing that I do want to say, just for public record, is I do think as a city, we kind of have to play a greater role with the planning board and just really continue to talk to our lobbyists about that because I do, I do believe that it is a huge factor in why a lot of people are moving out of Prince George's County. Our designs look completely outdated, and they are not places that many people, for the price that they're going for, would want to purchase and buy into. So I think if the county is going to continue to have these strict conventional kind of design requirements, we really need to play a greater role of advocacy there because a lot of this stuff is starting to look very old and honestly quite tacky in the county. But thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilman Truesdale?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I just, I don't have the question. I just want to just comment in terms of, you know, just the development team, the great presentation. I want to think, you know, the community as well. It's been a two and a half year, as Ms. Babin was saying, Ms. Lisa was saying. And for the most part, thank you for, you know, the transparency, even through this process here. And so I just wanted to just highlight that, and I think it's very important that, you know, the price point do collaborate with new buyers that's that's coming in our city as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no other questions at this time, I will entertain a motion.
This is District 3. District 3. Yes.
Councilman Truesdale, would you like the opportunity to introduce the motion?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to so move this motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm seeing our attorney make eye contact with us. We might need, we might need a clarification on that motion because there's two things we're doing, PPS and DET.
Yes, I would appreciate it if you could state specifically the motion, what the motion is. So it would be a motion to approve the the PPS and the DSP.
I would like to make a motion to approve the PPS and the PSC.
Is that enough? Second.
Is that enough?
So, no. I gotta take my. I'm sorry, I missed whether you indicated both applications, the DSP as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, I did.
And I second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any further discussion?
Just for clarity, just for clarification, since it's a DSP and a preliminary site plan, do we need two separate votes on it? Two separate motions and two separate votes?
I think it's okay for you to include them both in one motion.
Okay, we can't do it in one? Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all so very, very much. All right, I really appreciate everyone coming on, to those who are listening, staff, all of you. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
It's been ruled, it's been moved and properly second. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned.